All of the things you're right now, we've been from your name, we've blessed your name with those names and words that we be blessed. We love you Father for being such a good God. We love you for what you stand on, what you're doing and what you want to do. And we bless you right now and ask the blessing from this remain. You try to do those things with your life. Yes, if you ask the question, um, in the same my voice, isn't it?
(Inaudible) United States of America, into the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, I want to remind you that this is a workshop and during the workshop you do not vote. Um, but we, if we have something that needs a vote, then we can put it on our next agenda and that way we can vote. I do know that there's a lot of you here and I know a lot of you are coming to come and speak and we want to hear what you have to say, but we will have to have a time limit. And we're going to limit your time to three minutes. And, um, our staff has stepped off and, uh, after three minutes, um, then we'll get somebody else to chair. Item number three, the board should receive free statements from Stacey Kirk, Doug Gil, and
I'll let her come up to us. Uh, Commissioner, as we recall, we received, well, we issued a solicitation for, excuse me, sale of a hospital. Um, that was to be received on April fourteenth. Um, fortunately, there were no bids received, um, from that solicitation. And so, in the discussion of that item, I recommend it to you that we at least consider the, uh, possibility of an online surplus auction with Doug Gil. And the representative that we, I had reached out and spoke to, um, from that company, she was Miss Stacey Kirk. She has agreed to come here and kind of give you an overview of the process and her involvement and your expectations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, White Guy, for having me. I appreciate it. You work up here? So I am Miss Stacey Kirk and I'm with Doug Gil's online office. Um, as Mrs. Douglas said, um, we got in touch in regards to your, uh, bid to put out for the real estate and, um, and chat with you about our services and in the big picture of how it is we operate, still in support and this kind of such base after which people have been on, definitely, also feel good. Um, and that, well, as you said, I am today talking about how it is we go by dating. Um, he did tell me, he shared his information in regards to the real estate, um, offers. But, uh, please keep in mind that Doug Gil is indeed an off, online auction seller for any and all of your surplus, whether it's you say, um, it's current technology, it's, uh, vehicle, still in the business or whatever. So we've been in business for over twenty years and are, uh, only government who helps us with any and all of them. So, big picture, uh, we are in the, the one arm of the, uh, online surplus marketplace, on the first services. Our dealerships are distributed to governments and the state agencies, the other ones are, are commercial and, uh, smaller, um, smaller end of businesses too. So when, and we have bidders that are out there, um, viewing your auction site, they also have bidders in the other divisions as well looking at it too. So you're not just limited to just your local, um, just your local bidders here. Uh, big picture, it's out in two thousand, uh, this has been in business for nineteen, twenty years. It's based in Montgomery, Alabama. Uh, this is our two billion dollars in sales. Uh, we have over thirteen restaurants throughout the country, up in Canada. And, uh, over four thousand members clients throughout the, throughout North America. And proud to say we performed in forty seven, right here in Florida. Um, what we like to do is to see what's up from, uh, your local, um, auctioneer or, uh, competitors are online. And we have over seven hundred and thirty thousand active and registered and verified that it's online. So that means they, they have to go through a vetting process, we will, and hopefully a series. So that when you need, if you get the bid, it is, uh, it is how it is verified and, um, it's not applied on like this. Um, what drives that, uh, that figure of seven hundred and thirty thousand, maybe I was mistaken. So this is the top line, um, um, online auction, um, competitors are, uh, you have not taken that great, any local auction in. So this is, uh, a web visitor graphic analysis done by a third party, it's in a third party's vendor called Simgo Win. And they got really good comparison. As you can see, Doug Gil has the most. Uh, this is two, you see auction website and that would be the red line there ahead of the road. Again, the idea here is that the more visitors coming to your auction, the bigger your asset, the higher ROI would be given to that asset regardless of the quantity. Um, big picture, these are the numbers, eight twenty rules, twenty percent of the revenue comes from major penalties. These are the goals. Um, keep in mind, like I said before, anything and everything you do regarding, um, all of your assets being sold, it's anything from large to small. So this case, there, she kind of shares department's account for itself, uh, sold this, um, held up this broker, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, alright, and had over ninety bids on it. But also too on the flip side, my colleague up in Wisconsin, who works at State, uh, Wisconsin Department of Resources. So they sold this boardwalk for a dollar, so they needed to add a savings mechanism, where they had somebody come in to remove the boardwalk versus going on the bid order service and they made it a dollar. So somehow, how did you, you know, beauty of, um, the topic? See the Florida client, Wayne, Jay, Jacksonville, State of Florida, Jacksonville, Lebreson, um, according to you, Madison, uh, Daniel, Lake City, Jefferson, Marys, and, uh, Bay County as well. This is bidder base, the verified bidder base we talked about, with fifty two thousand, David Jones, Florida. Of those fifty two thousand, there are about sixteen hundred and thirty within fifty miles of here, Taylor County. That also reaches into Georgia as well too, from the fifty mile radius here. Uh, marketing advertising. So, we have a, um, back in Montgomery office, we have a, uh, marketing department who is nothing but focused specifically on getting your auction out there to the general public. Again, the more people see it, the more results you're going to get, the higher ROI it will have. This service is a neat phrase. It's part of, of the buyer's fees that you pay them, it probably be nothing at all. So we put, um, any idle items that they never can take up trust from these main dealers, we put it out there on our application. You'll pay the car damage, auto trading, and the life, alright, uh, no marketing, uh, cost, a difficult view, and, um, the, uh, reporting is involved, so just a quick screenshot of that, we can get into that later. But we, um, we truly provide for, um, transparently for all, um, government, all the resources, alright? So this case is the screenshot and I'll get into yours, I've got a real estate auction. This would be up in Santa Rosa Way in Jacksonville and, uh, these papers are still here. We've had, uh, three hundred and thirty four visitors to the site, alright? And fifty four thousand dollars, I'll, I'll give you, uh, if I can recite it. So then we also have Clay County Board, um, County Commissioners, also uses our, um, our site for the real estate auctions as well. Again, I'll pay with up here later. Uh, Baker County, these are the auction samples here. Let's get down to the nitty gritty, what's the, what is, what is it we do and, and how it applies to you? No fee to you, the white paper, I mean, twelve and a half percent. With that, we get the two red lines, the four back in Montgomery, Alabama. I'm Daisy Orlando, I follow your page in Tampa. We are here in addition to Montgomery House, helping towards because of your auction. You're, we're not putting the book, it's a very own handle yourself. We're here to help you sell off at your location. We got ideas to act at the man at other locations. Buyer comes on site, pick it up, as new areas, no fee to you, no services that you provide to that customer. Their response is coming to the site, they contact you, and you're on their side. So, um, with that being said, with the payment pump up there, you have to immediately use a contact, uh, piggyback on. You know, because I will give it once, you know, county, course block, and state of town, of course block. And then we have some dedicated, um, what you're going to say, alright? Back there is a quick PowerPoint. Let me show you guys the results. Okay, so this is, um, Doug Gil's online auction website here. And these are all the categories that are out there. So I'm going to, I'm going to be short, so let me go quickly to show you the results that we get here. Um, in this case, we're going to go, and let's look at. The items, anybody can see this, you can go home and get to see this film. It's out there for a year and I'm still got it for you. Like I said, anything and everything, everything is, if it's legal, ethical, or moral, we will, we will put it on our auction website. Okay, so the Jacksonville Chief of Staff put photos up there, I told you your fault. So this section up here will be, uh, holds a spot for five hundred photos, alright? In this case, we have worked with our legal department and they are, the legal department is the one who puts in the word in here. You could say as little or as much as you want, put it in here. And again, the more information you put in here, the better the results are going to get on your auction. So again, this would be the legal terminology, um, that comes from the, uh, real estate book, Westlake, uh, resident, um, industrial property, all the law. And in this case, we're looking, we asked, we had two hundred twenty six visitors to the site. We opened it up, I have a hundred and nine visits, actual bids on this. It opened at a thousand dollars. And it sold for twenty eight, I need to add, twenty eight thousand, alright? With a hundred and nine bids. We collect the thirty one thousand, collect the tax, convince that to give it to you, get our commission out, and return the entire amount back to you. Seller information. In this case, the group gives the, uh, the city attorney, the local attorney, their information to you. Expectance, the expectation is basically told you how you can handle it to profit, what the asset, it doesn't, you know, it's, whether it's the vehicle or whether it's, uh, land, whatever. How you expect it, so as you wear it, contact Joe or, um, only on Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, between twelve and two, whenever you see this. When the item is more than five thousand dollars, you don't put white transfer, it's for help, um, the bidder, exactly how it's helped you pay the, uh, our website, how it's collected. Well, I'm not going to take right off, you spend a lot. Questions and answers. If there weren't a live auction, there'd be a button right here saying ask a question. You can ask a question, it goes to your server, it's on your, on your email, you can ask, ask the question, see the question you want, answer it once. That way you're not answering the same questions every time. Alright, this case is Clay County, Ray Coles, please. Okay. Here are the only votes that we can vote on, alright? You have to say you voted, you're twelve steps, totally, you're calling, I don't think so. Seven thousand and fifteen visitors came to the site and a hundred and nine bids. It opened at five thousand and it closed at fifty thousand. Again, the description here is free form, please keep it as little as you want, as little as you want, depending on what your boardwalk states is. Seller information, you can put the name in there or not. Expectance, anything, payment information, special instructions, and questions. That is the big picture about your advertised ability. I know that you have a number of submissions you had. I will have to come back, talk about any more details, show you the backend, that's what we do, we do any choice. But I know the time is running, so I need to put a favor of what we do and how we do.
I have a question. Is there a term of extension as to how long you, you should, from this?
We recommend seven to ten days. But remember, everything that's being up here is need with your asset, your auction. So we give you basic information, a basic format, and basic everything. And I will sit down with you and, and talk the truth, so what are you trying to extract, to, uh, extract from it? What are your goals? What's the numbers? The regimen, uh, the increments, the regimen, the journey, the regimen, exactly. So my colleagues, Doug, we provide that to you, alright? Um, so I recommend, you want to build proportions, you want to build derivatives, your options, your assets, you do. Do you think we're seeing any, you got a similar, um, any other questions from here?
I have a question. What can you tell on, on, just a little bit, I do. And we don't enter into any long-term contracts, just in days or whatever that is. Alright, now, one more question. I don't think I'll do this. The purchaser pays twelve and a half percent.
Correct.
And then you show them example, and if I heard you write, this is a property, this is a vertical up, sub thirty thousand, and I heard you say, we deduct the twelve and a half percent from the bid price, and high bid thirty thousand percent of difference. Is that, is that I misunderstood?
Maybe I said wrong. I don't see it on top of the sales price.
On top of?
On top. So what we do for you is we take the entire toll sales price, we pull out our commissions, and then enter the tax, your sales price plus the tax, we collect it on your behalf, and then you're missing state tax. In regards to the nitty gritty, we're just, we're not looking at any details. Um, we will indeed start relating to the state where the state mandates, by now, for a long while, so when we tweak, sometimes we'll need to, uh, under the need to stay on behalf, or no matter what it is.
You know my question, please, good question. Have you liquidated any hospitals on your website?
Um, within the state of Florida, no. Uh, yes, throughout the US and Canada. So I can, uh, send you a file if you have your life.
Good question. I'll send some stock for you.
You know?
We thank you, you thank your family.
Mr. and Mrs. Reeves, as we recall, we were recently discussing a proposal from the DOT. Uh, was proposed to an area along Riverside Drive, right there at the far west end, where it's interconnected with, uh, County Route sixty one. The proposal that DOT sent before us was that they were suggesting a rerouting of Riverside Drive along, um, Hart Avenue, interconnected with Port Bassin South. And then a transfer of ownership of the original curb alignment of Riverside that extended onto the west, as transferring that under two county ownership. Uh, the discussion, I know, focused on the different options that were being proposed, uh, whether it be a continuous tree, or if it has stock conditions. And then it kind of migrated from there into actual eventualities of those that, um, renamed that county's ownership, or whether it's had some, um, suggestion of going into private ownership to avoid that, uh, financial liability associated with it. So, since that time, um, I kind of went back and started looking at the traffic studies. And, um, all this started with, uh, a traffic study that was submitted by DOT that was completed in September of last year. And it says that the purpose of that traffic study was to evaluate the current functionality of that roadway segment. And then the apparent situation that they were attempting to resolve was that, I'm going to quote here, that Teagah Marina and the Shacks of Teagah are generating significant pedestrian traffic and parking turnover during the parking season. So just to recap, the findings of that were that Riverside is on the state highway system. They classify it as a minor rural arterial, that has a speed limit of thirty miles per hour. Uh, the current configuration is a nine-foot traveling with some paved, some unpaved shoulders through there. And I just remind you that this wit that is there today, uh, DOT purchased that roadway in, uh, two thousand three, two thousand four timeframe. And that was, uh, that was the wit that was chosen at that point in time. It has high pedestrian volume in and around the Teagah, um, businesses there. Uh, they reported that there were two hundred and twenty seven crossings, uh, on August fourth in a ten-odd hours. Uh, along that same, on that same day, and I'm not sure whether the same hour or the different hour, but the maximum volume of vehicles through there was just under a hundred and ninety. And the, the traffic study also observed that there was lots of parking in the right of lane. And, um, they mentioned that the, they noticed that Teagah pulls this, carrying large loads down along the road. So, now I get to the information that I gave you, um, and then hand out. This is section seven, which is the recommendation that was produced in that traffic study, in the DOT traffic study. And in that recommendation there, it says, since the sudden segment experiences traffic operation uncharacteristic of the minor arterial designation, it is recommended to consider turning over authority of the segment to Taylor County as a local road and removing him from the state highway system. Pretty blunt. And in reading that, and I kind of mulled over all the stuff last night, is that, you know, my guess is that there are probably other roads on the state highway system throughout the state of Florida, throughout the United States, that also have pedestrian differences. And then have on-street parking. I can't fathom that the place on the Riverside is the only other stoppage. And my guess is also that DOT and the other jurisdictions in the, um, in the state, that their first reaction is not, well, we better get rid of this segment, or we give it somebody else. So, it makes you question, you know, why is this the study's conclusion? The study goes on in that recommendation section there to give you the, um, the concept of how do we make it comply with the state highway system requirements today? And they go to say that, this is what you have to do. DOT would need to widen lanes to slow feet and follow lightest lighting beacon, mid-block crossings, and eliminate parking within the right of lane. They also say that the access to the both doors would have to be cut off because there's have too many access along that section. The study really doesn't seem to have any type of criminal ground. It is, we're going to get rid of it, or we're going to make it fully compliant today. And I suggest that, I think there's a reasonable option that we can move toward that makes it a safer state-owned road. And I'm going to suggest to you that, um, we can handle it. So, if you look at the second page, yesterday, um, as well as having, I happened to view, uh, a live webinar that was put on by DOT that deals with safe transportation for every pedestrian. Pretty fitting, isn't it? If you look at the very next slide, you'll see that one of the presenters kind of sets the tone for it. And it says, all roads should be designed with the premise that there will be pedestrians, that they must be able to cross the street, and they must be able to do this safely. And if you look at the next slide, you'll see that pedestrians are legitimate users of the transportation system and should be included as design users for all roads where they are legally permitted. And this is the mindset. So if we know that pedestrians are going to be crossing for good because they're at the attraction on Riverside Road, then we need to acknowledge that we, then, the designer of the roadway, and we need to accommodate that. In the best of ways, this manner that was often handled. So as the webinar went on, ultimately, we get to the conclusion section, and if you look on the next slide, these are the various countermeasures, uh, calculations, the various countermeasures that was suggested for different skin areas. And if you look at the very first, um, our vehicle, AATP, which is, uh, well, as in the nine thousand, we have a speed limit, I told you earlier, that's the thirty five, uh, thirty miles per hour. And if you look into the roadway configuration, you know another road, Riverside in that area is a two-lane roadway. So that gives us that first little less block. And you see in there, there's a number one, two, four, five, six, and the number one is bolted. And the bolt signifies that that countermeasure should always be considered. And if you look over at the number one, you'll see that number one represents a high visibility crosswalk marking, parking restrictions on the crosswalk approaches, adequate, nine ninety lighting levels, and crossing warning signs. If you look at number two, four, five, six, you'll also see that that suggests considering raised crosswalks, in-street pedestrian crossing signs, curb extensions, and pedestrian recognition. So, what I would suggest to you is that with all of these possibilities, that if within the DOT context of design to address pedestrian safety measures, which was the gist of the entire study, then why not let's use that? Let's take and say, DOT, we believe that you can use your very own guidelines and countermeasures to address the situation sensibly and reasonably, without having to go the full route of an ownership transfer or closing it or anything else like that. And if you look on the very next slide, you'll see, um, this isn't a hundred percent like what I'm suggesting, but it was a very specific graphic that is a depiction of those countermeasures that we were just discussing. And what you can see is that along the street, you have on-street parking on both sides. Then as you come up to the location that you are concentrating your pedestrian crossings, we throw an island right in the middle of the road. And the difference between what you see here and what I would suggest is Riverside, we know is a two-lane roadway, two-lane undivided roadway as you're going through this area. What I would suggest is leave it undivided up to the point that you approach this refuge island. And then change the horizontal alignment. That change in horizontal alignment is going to cause those vehicles to pay attention. They're going to have to maneuver the alignment to go through there. That gives you the added benefit of traffic calm. The refuge island then gives you the added benefit of when pedestrians are making that crossing, maneuver from one side to the other. Between the edge of the road and that refuge island, you're worried about one directional traffic, you're not worried about two. So I just cut my concern down to sixty percent. That coupled with additional lighting, um, that can be installed here and then at man signing, as well as special entry payment marking, are all obvious measures that DOT is telling the general design public, this is what you should be doing. So what I would suggest is, I think, turn about it straight away, in this instance, that I think we could easily, um, recommend back to DOT, before we have to jump all the way to the proposal that you offered us, why not let's consider the proposal to address the countermeasures that you guys are telling everybody that we shouldn't?
Is there space there to do this?
Um, yes, and it's a sixty-five, sixty-six, I think, um, area, light lane through there. And what you do is you have two lanes of travel. But as you come up to those two lanes, you constrict it and get rid of the parking to where there's nothing more than just two travel lanes and a refuge island, the minimum width on it has to be sixty.
Well, this would still be, uh, two lanes?
It would still be two lanes.
Not one way, two lanes.
Two lanes, directional travel. And that's, there's, obviously, you have the option to extend parking on both sides. And I actually did, uh, almost before the front recommendations. And what I would suggest too is that when we know we have pedestrians that are going to be wanting to move north, south, east, west, along the Riverside on both sides, if we have that on-street parking, why not consider if you have the sidewalks that are running along the heads of those parking areas, so that we can move the pedestrians and the pedestrians have an identified route to carry and see these crossing paths?
And so, um, option two, when you see there's a raised crosswalk, why would you not, um, recommend that? you not, um, recommend that? The raised crosswalk? I don't know why, excuse me. I tried to, is that the right?
You don't, they don't have a crosswalk. Uh, that, that is fine. Um, the raised crosswalk, I would not suggest necessarily. Um, and I'll, I'll retrieve these recommendations in just a second, but logistically, Mr. Norwood has a storage unit that is on the west side of where I anticipate a crosswalk would be. So the raised refuge island, yes, that would be a vertical, um, island. You could still have a sidewalk or pedestrian crossing that is at raised at the same level as the roadway, but often the curbing coming to it would have your six inch height. I wouldn't suggest a vertical change, like a speed hump or anything of that nature just yet, because realizing that he does have, um, storage units further to the west, it's probably not a, a good thing to have a change or a bump in the roadway if he did have to maneuver that stuff, if you have a forklift that's carrying a large load even faster than that.
But I said, I said raised crosswalk, I'm thinking, we walk up the steps and...
Oh, no, 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 that's not, no, no. It's not that extreme, no, no, no. I don't think you have the footprint to do that.
Yeah, that's a question. This is a thirty mile per hour speed limit going through the island. Yeah, sir. To me, it would suggest you, um, traffic, that this would be set, and I'm not gonna be near it.
I am, and I still think it's a good topic. I don't think there's any reason not to reduce the speed through there from recognition of the congestion that's in that area. And I think that by doing the change in the alignment, to go, have, force the vehicles to go around that refuge island in the center, that's gonna be a byproduct of that speed lane. So, you know, we can reduce the speed as you're approaching the congested area, but you're gonna wind up seeing the vehicles are gonna have to slow or slow down because they're having to basically navigate around this. And that's a perfect time in which to, now that we're more attentive, what better place to have them more attentive than that pedestrian crosswalk?
Right. At least in terms of that, do you have to have any two twelve-foot lanes?
I'm not saying that you have to necessarily go to twelve-foot lanes.
About ten feet.
I would make them as wide as they could.
All right, in which, for the meeting. So, two thousand and twenty-four, sixty-third, you've got sixty feet in roadway.
Sixty-five, sixty-six.
So that leaves a certain speed for parking.
That's right.
You can, you know, talk about parallel parking, or...
No, sir, and I don't, and I'm obviously not talking about trailer parking. This would be your vehicle only part of the parking. You know, it's a storage unit. The boats are there. Mr. Norwood stores the boats, puts the boats in the water for them, you drive up, you get out, you get in your boat, and you go. So it's not that you have to have an abundance of trailer parking along that route. He may want to try to consider, um, uh, some portion of that where the trailer boat could go in, but I would not suggest that it be lined along the road.
You have, at least, parking of boats, huh?
Yeah, I, and the reason I say that I think you do is because right now it is, I hate to use word haphazard, but, you know, the alignment is however the cars start to lay out. If you have designated parking spaces, you tend to have a better, um, arrangement of the vehicles through there. And in addition to that, where we now are restricting the parking path to pedestrian crossing locations, you don't have that today. So you may have vehicles, you know, crossing intermittently between parked vehicles, and that's obviously something you don't wanna have.
Now, I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
At our, uh, last discussion we had here at the board, we talked about one of the options involved, for the state doing Park Avenue.
Yes, sir.
Have you put any thought to what you talked about here?
I did.
And in addition to that, use Park Avenue as an alternate route, and if, and if a vehicle comes through and it wants to slow down ten miles an hour, it's going to go through the gallon bird, see that? So, we do our family route.
Absolutely. I mean, I had it written down on my sheet, but I didn't say it just for consistency, but their own study says that through traffic is already avoiding C H A from us by utilizing Park Avenue South and Park Avenue Avenue. But the very own study says...
Charlie, it's a good, like, thought, but...
Ab- absolutely.
It helps.
Absolutely.
Now, some points in process, to the options to say, Charlie needs to have some significant input, that affects his business and property there. I mean, you know, you can, you can work with, pop in on it, I think, and still accomplish the goal, but that was, uh, to do, which is...
Right. And, and I think Mr. Charlie should be very instrumental in assisting with the locating, the appropriate location of some of these pedestrian crossings as well as some of the parking, all you can do. I, you know, I didn't, I haven't discussed this with Mr. Charlie and D O T, I haven't discussed it with anybody other than, you know, I gave a brief overview to Alwanda, uh, an hour ago. The rest of that, you know, I formulated this myself, um, and just after having sat down and read through it, I kept seeing that, here's the problem, here's the problem, here's the problem, well, the only solution is to get rid of it. And I, I couldn't jump, make that part of the jump, when there are other opportunities that I think should be exhausted before we get to that one.
Right.
Well, that's what I thought right here.
And that's really just, um, kind of an enumeration of what I just gave you, with the exception of one, number four, was the only one that I did discuss with you, um, which, I think Mr. Charlie has already understood that there are some, um, concerns with the forklift traffic out in the roadway, going back and forth as well as having opposing vehicles coming through there. I think one thing that he is, and, sorry, I'm wrong here, is that he's willing to consider is to transfer that, um, that part of his operations further to be, where he has kind of more of a straight, direct access across the street at close proximity to Park Avenue, where you can shuttle those back and forth versus having to come out and down. So that was the number four there. Something that kind of come up in discussions that, I, that would only make the overall situation better.
Now, with the parking, you could still have space for tunnels, which you're talking about. Good. Any questions from the board?
We have not, we just, we didn't, yeah.
That's right, yeah.
This pattern you got here, where they come, excuse me, this pattern you gave you, this on the space, uh...
You know what, that's great, I would be interested in conference.
Hey, that's good enough.
The webinar I visited yesterday, and that was the last thing that was in your packet.
Yes.
These are the details of the various scenarios, and they give the percentages that this type of measure is supposed to reduce pedestrian issues or pedestrian fatalities. They also give some of the history as well as different crosswalks for that. So literally, I, after sitting and reading the study and then going through that webinar, it was, it was all clicking together like this was a perfect match. I'm not sure why we're not getting used to it.
Well, it looks like that's what I wanted, yeah, because, uh, I mean, what I read last week sounded beautiful. Hey, this is pattern, not the L R, and they have used it before. Why didn't we do it? You know, this would have, uh, Charlotte's business, and also a good company for their own.
As well as preserving, preserving as much of the existing usage and benefit of that section of roadway as...
I like the one I heard so far.
I'm amazed.
I'm amazed.
That, that, you know, you come up with something that, that they recommend, and they have it on their website, but when they come to us...
They didn't make any...
They didn't take them down here.
That's, that's just a nox when they were here. Yeah, I'm proud of them.
Thank you so much.
They don't think they got anything to do with it.
If there's a town of, other than four, you would like to come and speak, state your name and your address, and you have three of them to speak, so I'd feel the light and be first.
I'd like to be first. Go ahead. My name's Bobby Moth, I'm all-time resident of St. Hacey, and I don't doubt what this fellow says on the road side. We got congestion in St. Hacey, not only from toward this place, starts that boat ramp, and it goes all the way down to the other morning, a long stretch of road. I don't doubt they got a safety issue, a terrible issue along that whole road. I think terrible planning, that boat ramp. Like, we needed it, terrible plan, because it's congested the road completely up. Rerouting traffic, I've talked to a lot of people in St. Hacey, and you know, they're dead set against it. We're gonna create another traffic situation at the end of Park Street and School Gray, First Avenue, right there. You don't, will not be able to get out of there. There's no doubt about it. That road backs up all the way to Mason sometimes. And this is always during the holidays, the entire scout season. I don't know what's gonna happen when we have an emergency vehicle, and need to run through there on those hip hops, but even if you go around the rerouting section, you wrap the boat ramp, too. Now, I think there's a solution, and I've heard several suggestions. One of them is reroute the traffic, like you just suggested, and then, before you get charged. But that, that's just a little section of our problem, and part of charging, or... So I just, for any decision made about, I don't know why I would count it myself, my personal view, is why I would count it. I, I didn't think it was a bad idea for the one-way suggestion, um, highway, which would actually leave us a little bit of room for possibly a sidewalk along the entire river wall, like several other places have. Cedar Key, Cedar Key deals with this every weekend. I know you've been there. Cedar Key don't seem to have a problem handling it. They slow down, the speed on the North Mountain down road, those are fast vehicles, those are boats that handle up, enjoy riding down the entire length of that, that river that they have. So, you know, I know that there's a solution, but I, I am, I'm against giving that roadway away. We got a lot of people to enjoy, to enjoy riding down that road, in part, that Marina, and every other Marina, and, so, I think it shows in a bandaid, that's my whole, in fact.
And, well, Mr. Moth, we appreciate, I must say, and I want to add this, that, um, uh, we talked about it last meeting Sunday, we'll be talking about it more, we have to make long-term solutions for C H A, because you're growing and you're growing, and I don't think that's gonna stop. So in terms of the, the boat ramp congestion and all the other things, we, we have to start thinking in terms of long-term, how we're gonna fix that. So it's not gonna be overnight, but we realize that we have an issue there, and, um, but even I appreciate you being here, I appreciate your company.
What is the issue, a lot of our whole air supply is, it ain't just one hop.
Thank you.
That's what I'm gonna say.
Thank you.
Good evening. Donnie Ellington, uh, civil engineer, I've worked with you guys for, uh, I don't know what year, since the war, so you can come up with ideas. Uh, and I'm representing Charlie now, uh, and people both down there, enjoying having C H A available for you to use, I enjoy businesses that are there, and just stay in business, so I hope it's on the ground, like, to make it happen. So Kenneth has come up with a grand idea, he's a good guy, and also, who you got growing on for, I'm happy he's here, he's got the person, and he does have some sound, that's important. But in fairness to D O T, we did look at this one-way option that they presented, and I agree 10 degrees, I think Kenneth 10 degrees, that, that is a good traffic calming solution. Now, it does create a problem with, you know, people being going too late forever, and you're gonna all of a sudden have an option to just go one-way, and I understand that's disruptive, so maybe that's not, that's what my idea is. But it is a sound solution for traffic calming, and making that fine today, so I just wanted to make that clear. So we did see that from D O T, uh, it made sense, it is a sound solution, provided that it's acceptable to the community, you would have it one-way. The other thing that I'd like to work with Kenneth on, and Kenneth is saying, I'll make the lanes as wide as I can, well, traffic calming is about making you feel uncomfortable. If it's wide, and you can feel on distance, you're gonna go there, posting the speed limit, I'll do anything, you know, just maybe if you got somebody there, you can get you a ticket. But you need to narrow it, narrow it if you can. So he says as wide as you can, I'm saying narrow it if you can. If you guys, see, let me and I work on that a little bit, come up with a better solution. And the, uh, raised crosswalk, not an elevated, gray separated, which is what we was just in here, got in the cause of confusion, but, uh, it's basically just curbed line. So, uh, if, if, if you don't do it right, it's a speed hump, if you do it right, it's what's called speed table, and it's just kind of gradual, and it's kind of makes you slow down a little bit. Those are sound practices for slowing people down and making them feel like if you go to one, that's what you gotta do. If you don't make it right, and say, I'm gonna speed through here like it's a turnpike or something, so, uh, again, D O T presented that to us, it's a sound solution, it may have some issues with, with, uh, the community. And again, as far as ownership, I don't think it matters if it's, if it's D O T, it's county, as long as we can come up with a proper solution for it, that's really what gets to happen. Thank God.
Thank you.
Looks like it's gonna be me.
Thank you very much.
Okay, pass one, pass, pass one, pass down. This, this is a petition that we got, likely of St. Hacey, yeah, St. Hacey, Florida. In less than twenty-four hours, we collected three hundred and fifty signatures on this petition. We want the road back as a two-way road, we don't want one-way roads on there, we would like to keep it as it is. You've got some great ideas as far as putting crosswalks in there. Charlie, have you ever, have you ever tried to get a crosswalk to do before?
Yes.
And why, why are you denying it?
Because it's not acceptable.
And you have to have to work on that, or you, you submit it to the state?
Um, I've already, in court, I've already, okay.
Because I checked with Henry Howery, they said that they put in for a crosswalk in front of their car. They, they were denied, because if they put it in, everyone else would have put it in too. Put it in, let's not change the road, though. Let's not change it into a one-way street. We're gonna have an absolute mess at Park Avenue. We would have been turning the, this petition empty off, that's the next thing that's up there, Doc. Because that's in twenty-four hours, we got three hundred and fifty-two signatures. And, and the signatures in this petition is, C H A people need to keep, C H A people in the one-way traffic both ways. Yes, sir. It's a traffic both ways. You've got some great ideas? And that would be great for crosswalks.
Well, this would make it simple, let Kenneth explain.
Correct.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Okay, you got it.
All right, so next, yes, sir.
New server, Christine Hacey, a couple points of, I've got a mini story here on St. Hacey, I'm built out, I can't build, I, I can't put a five-gallon bucket there if it's permanent or possible, and I'm built out, and I, now I have to build my business according to what I have. Okay, and I expect every other business to do that also. Uh, Joey Devane opened that restaurant there at Kate's Beach, and he didn't have enough parking, okay? Couldn't spur beer, if I remember correctly, because there wasn't enough parking cost on his property, because you can't use county or state land for your designated parking for an establishment. So I would just advise you that a parking issue, if nobody, if a business doesn't have room for parking, and they use county right-of-way parking, I can't have any sympathy, because they knew that when they started. Okay, part of the congestion to C H A is the parking along the residence. Okay, I'm a business person now, and if you bring the business to flourish, by the same token, we operate within, uh, an area of regulation and order. So... So, I wanna keep you clean, uh, and safety is so important. But if you went down there, and the note called Charlie, I'm sure, that wrote the, uh, wrote the department, said, yeah, take those boat days that are four or five stories tall, and put them down there, and, you know, so now the boat days, they're, you know, are elevated to parking, is touching the state highway. Now, that's a safety issue, only because when I was there today, there's no cones there to keep me from going in. Seahack traffic can still come and go into that area. Now, if I did that with my truck, there, I mean, it's quite a, it's unsafe spot. So, I can't think that the state has done their due diligence in trying to create a state apple for that or anyway. And if the gentleman is in charge of that project, go charge, that'd be fine. Well, I'd like to see what his pay rate is, and then also, like, who he supervises, but it was terrible to position that. He does things, I understand that also, but he probably didn't have the space to put it. But by the same token, same thing, if you're down there to see the pictures, the state was culpable, you know, very unsafe, uh, situation trying to help him out. Okay? He didn't do it there, I'm, I'm sure he was told to put it there last year. But thank you very much.
This is what I'm talking about, right here. It's, there's people late for that, they're touching the highway on the road. That's an unsafe environment.
And what, what are the two?
That's the highway. Highway five.
Yes, sixty-one, and most right now for D O T.
River side of the highway. It's still open to your customers, that's a very unsafe environment. Charlie, if you trapped that money, flat it all over the highway.
Sir, if, if you would rent some more.
No, if Charlie trapped it, I can flat it all over the highway.
Thank you. Nick?
Hi, my name is Glenn Turner, I'm T P. Uh, St. Hackens, maybe we want to come to rest for a week. I don't think they hurt, I don't go down there because of the taxes. So, uh, I always turn left, go down the opposite lane, like most people do. Whatever you ask to, I'm sure you'll do the right thing. But my business is on beat trucks, I carry T P in twenty-five mile an hour. I can assure you, the only person who does twenty-five mile an hour in that area is me. Whatever speed limit you put on that little bit of road, they are not gonna evade that speed, that speed limit. Unless you put those large, six inch high units that you have in my book, the, 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 that will fall in there. But if you don't do something like that, it's thirty, forty mile an hour. Keaton Beach, my favorite thing, is the Coors Cup, every Thursday between eleven A M and one A M. If it's eleven A M, he passes my office at sixty mile an hour. If it's twelve A M, uh, twelve noon, he passes at fifty-five. If it's one o'clock, he's sixty-eight mile an hour. More helping, Mr. Blot, the Coors beer truck, coming through me head. I'm not kidding, I have a radar gun, that's popping more than once. He's always gonna hurt, and the later the day, after he... So, can you think of a little bit? If you reduce the speed limit, and I don't know the laws in Florida, I don't know the requirement of laws, but I know that any neighborhoods that has a pump that goes from one side of the street to the other and six feet wide and six inches tall, you're gonna slow down, and you will effectively get one, and then another. If you don't like it, because if you try to get to the thirty, you're gonna launch your vehicle. But I'm, I consider that on the laws, and I hope they're available for us to look at, I just gotta make sure what speed limit you put down there.
Right, and I think too, is in our long-term planning, we're gonna have to look at the Keaton Beach area also because of the congestion there.
Jerry Carroll?
He's a, yeah, he's got the same complaints of what we mean in the work at Seahack, um, being able to talk to him. So, this is, you know, when we start talking about long-term planning, traffic planning for St. Hackens, we're gonna be the same thing for Keaton Beach.
Okay, it's the sheriff's business.
Our, why, just represent.
I don't wanna do the sheriff, okay? But, in the last couple weekends, stitching some grates, the plate completely pulled down there. And all these wonderful signs that we put up that say, no parking, no parking, no parking. I had a photograph of the park right beside that sign, all the way down the road. And the biggest problem is that you can't really, you gotta cross from the first one, you will pick up your boat, okay? The sheriff's not, I've already talked about it, he's gonna audition it. Take the time, if we're not gonna, if we're not gonna, if we're so off, fly to New York.
Thank you.
I agree.
So, Nick? Can you run out of button speed? Yes, sir.
And with choice, St. Hackens, uh, you know, in the beginning, I wanted to tell you all of the things that D O T plans. Of course, the Dudley presented to you in the beginning, caused, in my mind, the problem down there. If they came in with a similar to what he has proposed, I'm all for it. The only thing that should not cover, that should be considered, is Park Avenue or those things, so Park City or those things, First Avenue. Uh, that is very difficult to get out right now and have been framed. A traffic signal, something to make it easier for you to also park on the third, whatever, especially in high pressure or all the time.
Did you hear that?
I, I did.
Thank you.
Well, Pam, you opened the door, one of my issues.
Thanks for that.
Bill Roberts, eleven forty-two, Highway fifty-one, North. Seahack needs a bypass. We talked about a long-range plan in the future for St. Hackens. Just really soon, the whole town will. Uh, a better throughway for Highway fifty-one. Law trucks have no business going into St. Hackens. They carry up that road. Good thing they're not doing it by Seahack. But, uh, so, that's supposed to be one of my issues, that was what I came here for, and I wanted to say, thank you for, for thinking long-term about St. Hackens.
That's for a bypass, you're not talking about...
Going over the north side.
You're not going all north of, of, uh...
You can have a, an access route from that bypass back into St. Hackens. But, give it, give it a way for the semis to go without carrying up the road by a matty.
Well, when we get to that point, I'm sure we'll hold a lot of public meetings and we'd like for the public to come and we'd like to have your ideas. So, we'd like to see you here from that time to time.
Uh, I'll be here. And I'd like to thank Kenneth, he's a man of the hour.
Dudley for President.
Oh, yeah, he's in here. Okay, Nick?
Him and I, Dudley got one, wrangling, digging for it.
I'm John Williams, I've, uh, been a resident for about six years in St. Hackens. I live there now, I have business there for a couple of years, and we might look at business there now. And some of the things I've noticed about government in St. Hackens, well, government in general, won't take expert opinions and recommendations enough, turns into a political beast. And has, uh, ideas, but it's all fraught. One of the reasons I came to St. Hackens is because of the river. That river, the road winds right along the river, beautiful thing, the whole way. I hate to see that change. Just slow them down, that's all you gotta do, and make progress.
Thank you, you're welcome. Come on now, I know somebody up north to talk to, this is a good place, come on.
Oh, like you know anything about the, the issues, yeah.
I have a question, did you get a copy of a letter that I...
Yeah.
I'm Jack Addison, uh, at a four hundred South Riverside Drive in St. Hackens. Uh, I'm a daily witness to the safety concerns, uh, related to St. Hackens. Our home is on the southeast corner of the intersection of Park Avenue and Riverside. So I see the, you know, the speeding vehicles going along Riverside, and I see the congestion it caused on Park Avenue. Uh, and Charlie's trying to move his boats up and down to, you know, get the, you know, get from historic areas to this long areas, back and forth, back and forth. So, uh, you get on the, on the solution, man, we've got to have a long-term, uh, solution to this, this problem. There are three, there are three areas impact safety, you know, areas that, uh, uh, Seahack, uh, uh, that Charlie and I discussed all of these. The first one is the speed, the traffic, which I think the, the, the engineers that, uh, presented first, I think is a wonderful idea. And I certainly, uh, with, with that thing being massage a little bit, I think probably it's gonna end up being a good deal. The second big issue is the Park Avenue situation. And, uh, and discussing with Charlie, uh, he is wanting to, at least his plan now is to have another avenue, uh, to move his, uh, forklifts and boats back up with the cross Riverside where it doesn't impact on Park Avenue. Uh, I see everything near, uh, what they wrecked, but where, where people have to stop and let the forklift go by, et cetera, et cetera. And it's just a matter of time, or there's, there's gonna be something that, that, that we all will regret. The third part, that, that impacts on the safety around Seahack, is the parking issue. As Charlie's business has grown, probably even more than what he expected, uh, parking is becoming an increasing problem. And, uh, so we have Charlie Cutler parking all along Park Avenue, sometimes two deep on each side of the, of the roadway. Well, that, you know, this aggravates, you know, those people that, that have the property along there, and any agents, uh, having difficulty even get out of their properties with those cars, you know, parked along the roadway. So, and Charlie has a solution to that also, he's gonna create a, an parking area, even if we have to, uh, have some kind of shuttle service between that parking area and the main business. But something's gotta be done about the parking thing. And so I think if you're, you're thinking of a long-term solution, and things that Charlie's got in mind to resolve some of these problems, I think that given time and, and people's genuine interest and activity in this, uh, will, will have some solutions.
Nick? Do you copy our, please, please? Hey, uh, Kenneth, do you know where you're staying off to? Sorry, I couldn't hear.
I mean, I always say that...
You just got a whole lot of stuff to say right here, you just got a little thing.
I'm sorry, man, I didn't see you.
I'm Bobby Haddison, we're with Jack Haddison, on the corner of Riverside and Park. They own the property across the street on Park Two, which we rent. And what I really think would help them out is put a stop sign on the corner of Riverside and Park, where everybody has to stop. That would slow down and then make the speed limit sign say ten miles an hour, five miles an hour, whatever we need. But we need a stop sign, Riverside and Park, and then around the corner, when Charlie goes back in to the first. They have to stop both ends, that would slow down, but right now, there's nothing to slow down, the redneck, in the middle of the night, if we can get there in the morning.
I, I'd like to add that to this assembly, she's correct, if Charlie could put up a stop sign, they probably wouldn't have to change anything, you know? But put a little crosswalk right in front of the, the business out there, put a stop sign up, and nothing would really have to change that much. Cause it's gonna slow the traffic down. And coming from the other side, put up a, put a caution light on the other side if you have to, or speed bump, it's gonna slow them down.
I get it. I see.
Well, I feel right in my real St. Hackens. And the reason I came here tonight is to come up with your topic, listening to all this stuff from the back. The county's got a lot of hundred-foot rightways down in St. Hackens, doesn't obviously like to go for the long term, utilize those rightways. That's the easiest way to stop, it's all about the body.
He can get a pro, if he can get a pro, you got two lanes, you get down in St. Hackens.
And next, get some distance, they get some distance, Charlie's place, this is the right one. School grade, they call them, all that. Whereas if you utilize those rightways, put them all the way through, it gives about three or four more accidents per day, they come through, reroute traffic to the boat round. I caught with two ninety emissions in the past, they won't even miss a beat. Simple, 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 things you can do, backfog that, and use one-way traffic in there. And, and I just wanna put one drainage filter in at First Avenue, and reroute all boat round traffic from one direction and send it back out into direction. But I mean, you know, if you wanna, and if you're just gonna leave it to him, he'll ride on, show him all this stuff. I mean, that's gonna put rightways all in the place, then, but it's counting on him. And you need, I, you know, hard, I'm talking about parking down the side of the highway. You can have a hundred-foot rightway, you can park a bus, and a, and a thirty-foot truck, a hundred foot. But, I mean, that's just as you get one.
Well, we're trying to hear your intentions, and we're gonna look in for input from the public.
So that is a good, I mean, a real good solution, a lot of it, like I said, when you get to St. Hackens, you go down to the right, there's a lagoon and a swamp, you get up there. It'll have to be free to, to, to accomplish what I'm talking about, but you can see it. You know, I mean, you gotta lie, I think they're monitoring, why aren't you lying? Thank y'all.
Hi, I'm Ellen Lawrence, uh, St. Hackens, and I'm aware of listening to as much as I can hear, but, but, back there, but I think it's a full dawn, my sister will pay him, and much too, that she just pulled the traffic down, and he will pay. Uh, if that doesn't work for you, my sister and I will have the Park Avenue, we'll take that whole path of that street out, make it into Don Park, and I'm sure it'll be okay.
Anyone else, they owe the damn, now your time, oh, my dear.
With your, with the board's intent, what I would like to do is tomorrow, forward the information I presented to you tonight to, uh, Mr. Noah Wood, as well as D O T to kind of further the conversation, and see if we can collectively reach, uh, a proposal that kind of everybody needs.
I think what you've come up with is excellent, and it seems like that most people here think that you've done a really good job in presenting this. Um, one other thing I wanna ask about is, um, like flashing yellow lights or something, you know, you want people, there's congestion and there's traffic, I mean, there's pedestrians, or something, is that, was that being the scope of, um...
It is, that was one of the, um, I think they call it a significant seven or something like that, within the webinar that I've watched. They have LEDs that are around the perimeter of signs, and they have lighting beacon, you know, all of those are countermeasures when you get to the point to where you escalate, that table that I was kind of mentioning, as you start getting in higher speeds and larger volumes of traffic, you start moving to a higher level. So at the level we're at, it's really not a traditional, you know, one-stick item. And I think some of the alignment... Um, and I think some of the alignment, changes of alignment and, uh, crosswalks, others considering, I think will achieve a lot of what we've tried. So what we'll do is, we will, um, hopefully discuss this and then bring this back to you at the first opportunity. You know that, um, he might would be, he has a public meeting set up for, I think it's May fourth, I mean, somewhere in that time, right? So it would be great if we collectively came with those people's solutions that they could present at that time.
That would be great.
That would be okay.
Yes.
Don't yell at him, yeah. And before I address you, look around and address me, yeah. Please don't anybody run me over, I'm leaving. I would like to open the idea of the one-way street, it's, it's indeed, it's that, soundness, make a solution. I understand.
No, it is. No, it is. No.
I think it's not deserved, we must stand.
Okay, um, I'm sure that he'll consider that, um, but so far, our engineer's done a really good job, and we tend to listen to him. So whatever he comes back with, carrying a lot of weight, so, um, but I appreciate your input, and it may come to that, but it, it didn't sound like that was an option right now that he's pursuing.
Okay. And I don't expect to come back to you with anything but a good consolation. And I would like you did, uh, but sometimes there are other options that aren't part of the law, but they need to be fully thought out when it's. I don't.
We'll go to item number five, the ones that discuss requests for internet cafe business tax laws.
Time to meet you, see you later, good, you still walking?
Yes.
People are hearing about it again, and they, I think, are gonna start burdening it. So, if you got your, if you got a lot of fifty-five, two-hundred, you get, you get two. If you got one, if you got three lots of fifty-five, two-hundred, you get a fifty. But you can't get four of fifty-five, two-hundred. You know, I couldn't see the, the.
Um, I'm coming to the board for some guidance. We have had recently two separate requests for a business tax license to open an internet cafe in the county. And, um, I have been working with, um, marketing and the tax collector, and of course with Conrad. Um, we even got some guidance from the North Central Florida Regional Planning Council, and I'll say we're at a bit of a standstill at this point. Um, if you recall back in two thousand and eleven, the board passed a resolution, um, that for a three-month moratorium on, um, giving these business tax licenses to internet cafes, because there was some question about the legality of this particular type of establishment. Well, at that time, from what I recall, the state did, um, have some legislation and really, um, assumed the authority for the operation of these types of businesses. Well, it would appear that there maybe is, um, I don't wanna call them loopholes, but maybe there's opportunities within the current legislation for these types of businesses to open in surrounding counties. So, which leads me up to where we are now. So, um, I received a call from the tax collector, um, asking about our ordinances for internet cafes, and we don't have one that specifically addresses that. Um, we also do not have a line item within our business tax schedule for internet cafes. Um, we received some information from North Central Florida Planning Council, Regional Planning Council, that was stating in secondary that basically states that we should not grant licenses or permits for internet cafes, but really no information as to why. Um, certain of the state statutes, unless it's all kind of stretching our heads. So, I, I think that we are somewhat hesitant to say, don't issue a license or a permit. Um, we don't know how to charge it. So, we need some direction as are a part of our deal about this particular type of business tax license. Um, is there a charge? Do you want to add it to ordinance? Do you want to consider another moratorium so we can have some time to research a little further? Um, and I can have Conrad, he can.
Well, I can tell you, I'm not for it. So, it's home rule, the, can we apply home rules to this situation if we don't want it?
Charlie, hi. Um, my suggestion is that, um, put on your agenda for your next regular meeting to do some moratorium.
And how long do we need for moratorium, till we do it?
Advent and Ida. Advent and Ida, now, now I'm peeing on that. Let, let me just say this, um, a little bit about, um, generally seeing what happens when you do an internet cafe. They come in, um, they, uh, they open a, uh, I'm being careful with my words. They. But they come in, and, uh, they open up, and then, uh, they, let's just say they're logging points. And, uh, they take their money, they run. So, um, and, and that's happened in a number of counties throughout the area of West. Um, the moratorium that was last time evolved my drift. Um, so that would be my recommendation, to put on the agenda to come and what you want to do on the moratorium.
Oh, that's a good recommendation.
And if they come and ask you about that, put on the agenda for next regular meeting.
Right, that sounds good.
I will defer, if I care, I absolutely defer to internet cafes. So, for one, in perpetuity, who works, um, in this situation, I, I. Now, I'm gonna tell you a real life experience with an internet cafe. My son, my bed son, Daniel, he's an FDU, working on his masters, I mean, second degree in the county. I mean, he's got a job, his college student, student, got an internet cafe, old and clean. That baby, you know, he was, he was a kid, no love computers. And somehow or other, a computer malfunction, and the maximum payout was like twenty-five hundred dollars, and this guy won ten thousand. And the owner of the internet cafe fired Daniel, sued him, and accused him of going into the, entered into the computer and changing the, the program. So, uh, so, Dad blew the money, hired an attorney, and it doesn't ever happen with a lawsuit. So, I know I shouldn't say my personal experience, my family considerations, when I make my decision to oppose internet cafes. But I, I do it, one of those.
I have a question, for anybody in the comments, did anybody hear about Korea? Tell about Korea.
I've been here, I'm here twenty-four.
We all proclaiming, so South Korea, and the very first thing you see is that you or a loved one has this internet addiction, and it's good in there at cafes, and they have fights just going on in South Korea, and you come in.
You got people here that you think you can fight right there, and I don't fight you, and you're wasting your time.
There's nothing wrong about this.
I mean, yes.
I've never had the experience of being in an internet cafe, but before I could really make a decision on it, I would have to go to one and research it, and see what goes on. And I mean, that's it, we can't make a decision, I know, like, this is just discussion, but there's more to it than meets the eye. I've heard rumors, like, Mr. Mike been talking about, you know, there's good and bad, everything. And I'd have to do some research on one before I could really, uh, call it shot on.
If you Google internet cafes, what's out there, and preparations for this meeting, and read all of that, that might help you just make up your mind.
Well, you can Google anything on Earth, this day and time, and it'll tell you the product and the content, that's, that's for sure. I, I, I'll go somewhere and book in the one, and, and saw some looks before.
You go to Tallahassee, you go to Montcellus, you go to Bydlos, you go to Lake Shee, and you go to getting a leader.
I'm saying, um, for this meeting, that looks, this meeting, that's, oh, it's on, to look at a moratorium, and, um, just think, does that work? Can you why, like the resolution in two thousand and eleven, where it was for a tight order amount of time, in order to gather research? I think that's.
You know, it's linked to that, that's not your dad, you know.
I believe it was three months last.
Whatever it is.
Okay, yes. We're gonna go to number six, the ones that discuss requests for vehicles, landings, or.
Yes. Can I not tell you a little thing on number five, to make sure, man, come out of here. He calls one-four-five-three, I've got hash, you mess up, and you blame him. Why y'all always made up your mind, and come, well, this, we're gonna do a moratorium, and that's a decision. Now, you're not voting, but you've already made up your mind, you're gonna do a moratorium for the next meeting.
We're gonna place a moratorium on it, yeah, if the board decide if they wanna do it.
So long as it's a moratorium on the agenda, not a moratorium, like I understood, paying to say, three months for the internet cafe. Now, that's what I under, understand if you decide, cause I mean, I'm trying to, well, no, you don't need to make that decision now, you need to wait till the meeting.
Ma'am, we, we, we're not voting tonight.
I know you're not, but you already made up your mind.
Yeah, I got that.
So, tell me why, tell me why, I'm upset, tell me why, and I don't like it. Tell me why. What's the difference, and he does, he knows books.
No, I do not, he knows books, I do not.
Who in here knows books?
Now, I.
Not the gambler. I do a fishing bee.
You know, right now, I'm in Tallahassee today, and Tallahassee's the capital city. I don't know, I don't have any yards in Tallahassee.
Well, I think that's on there in a whole book, you might as well get.
Well, this way, if you have, when we had them. Well, this way, if you have, when we had them before, there wasn't any problem. Well, that was far brain. I wouldn't be like a senior. Look, I lived in the city, you know what I'm saying? I didn't do it. And the guy that's the new one, he's from Trenton and they had him in Trenton. So I'm just asking y'all to look at it because I was gonna ask you, what's, you talking about telling? You don't like gambling, right? No, no. Okay, please tell me the difference. And I don't want no trial and I don't want no mason on me. But y'all tell me the difference in what the trial club does with the bingo because they pay out cash money. Is that not gambling? I don't know what you're saying. I'm just asking you questions now. Is that not gambling? I, we, we heard, we heard you. No, we do not, we not listening. We're gonna put this on the agenda. Well, expect me to. Come on. That's all I'm saying. Expect me to. Come on, we want you here. I'll be there, all right, bye. Number six, the board to discuss recreational vehicles theft in land use ordinance. But yes, I heard, I don't remember that question, that was to be put on. I believe that one, it was.
It was in my head, um, I believe the last meeting or the last moratorium that we had to be successful on the next workup. About specifically about the RV density in the coastal areas for the judgment. And I believe that was based upon an increase of concerned citizen statements and an increased calls to our code enforcement office. So I, we placed a copy of the codified ordinance in your packet for a while ago. So I believe that was the direction, that was what I had in my notes.
Okay, if everybody had an opportunity to look at the, um, what's the code was it this review? And I'll pass it, okay. If I, I don't know if you've done it too long, you got anything else?
Not necessarily. I would say that, you have to do that. I would say that I think one of the specific issues that we have with the ordinance that was adopted in two thousand and eleven is the ability to grandfather certain property. And I think there may be some confusion in the public about what that means. And what that means to our staff is that if a park or prior to two thousand and eleven had a permit for a, an electrical pole and RVs were there, that RVs could continue to stay there. And it will basically, basically exempt from the conditions in the ordinance.
So that was part of two thousand and eleven.
Yeah.
And, yeah.
In two thousand and eleven, that part of the ordinance is, we had power poles. Didn't have that RV. I was here and I remember that when they fall off. And that their power pole there, they sent their money into this place and they would be allowed to, an RV there. So that's my, that grandfathering thing. Is that not fair to them?
Sure.
I briefly state my own standing in this ordinance and then you all tell me if I understand it right. If I recall, and I've read this one so many times, so many parts and loopholes and flutes. But effectively, I understand that if you have a lot in a coastal high open area in actually Peter Island, that you're entitled to place one RV on a five thousand square foot lot.
For five thousand square.
For five thousand. If you've got a ten thousand square foot lot and there aren't few of those, you can get two. Two power poles? You can get two RVs. But RV, no, not power poles. Uh, there were some folks before, you know, there's a date in it and if they had like four RVs on a property. And they were grandfathered in. It was dated, probably keeps that a little bit.
And it's, and so the grandfathering doesn't follow the person, it stays with the property.
That's not it.
Yes.
Now, also, there's a part in here that I'm, I'm in favor of, needs to change that way. If you are entitled on a lot to have one RV, then in Scottsdale, that weren't said, you can bring in a new one.
Yes.
But we don't enforce that. Now, I don't know if that's felony. If our code enforcement officer goes by and you say that they've given the RVs a lot, do we issue any citation?
There's a process that it follows where the technical officer basically notifies the, um, the resident and goes through his process and then they have to be called before the special magistrate. So we do not issue citations like we would at the overing, although that is further on in the agenda.
Is my understanding of that ordinance besting the way is?
Yes.
Well, I, what I don't understand is on page three, under D, if you'll look at page three on the D. It says, in all land use categories, recreational vehicles not signed within an approved recreational vehicle park shall not exceed a maximum of four units per lot. What does that say?
Well, that just means that if you have four RVs, then it's considered a park.
No, no.
So, or, excuse me, or if you got up to four, it says, it shall not exceed.
Right, a maximum of four. And I'm, I'm just really confused about that. I've read it over and over and I can't, I'm just not sure about that.
Well, that's not, that's not necessarily in the, in the coastal, the park or water.
And all, all land use category.
All land use category.
Does that not include coastal? But it says all land use categories?
Well, then you have to look at the exceptions, I believe, from that are, if you go down to E. It's specifically, I understand what you're saying. And that's part of our confusion, I would say.
Nobody at the beach should have four RVs on a lot except those that were grandfathered in. Early. I E explains RVs down in the bug ranch, I think it's four of them. They were grandfathered in. Now, if there's four on a motor lot somewhere outside of the park, I don't know, I don't know where it is.
Is that one, is that one or two law? That Mr. Wayne has two laws. I was just confused.
Mr. Wayne has two laws.
That's right.
So if he has two laws, then he should be entitled.
A four.
Right.
Not really.
Not really. They're moving a lot. Law only got ten thousand. Five thousand, is there?
Ten thousand square.
Are they ten thousand square feet?
No, it's five thousand.
Five thousand. They're two thousand.
Exactly.
But they're grandfathered in, because we already have four.
Right, but why you say they're grandfathered in, they're four, right?
But other than that, I don't know. I, I still get back to the point, I would be willing to report the second RV here in Scottsdale. If you can put it to them now. I don't own a RV anymore, what's wrong with that?
Clearly defined, you're right there. There's no need to imagine, you're actually right on the square, right there. When the issue is a code enforcement.
Well, from the Internet, go quick.
That's what I do.
You have to take into consideration in areas like Peter Island. If they have a ten thousand square foot park or, then they can have two plus a third one during scholarship.
Correct.
But that's not clearly defined in the ordinance. That's where I get some little tricky.
But then when you look at, it says in the water oriented and commercial land use classes. Would take it out of the, the president's separate hat entirely. How would you argue this?
I wrote it. So pursuant to my, pursuant to the instructions of the board, I wrote it. And I'll tell you this, I remember it well, I remember the plane issue well. I mean, we went round and round and round on that. I would see some folks that I hear that were there, that, y'all were there.
That's true.
And we, I would instruct a variety as clear as possible. And that, you know, it needs to be, um, thought that, you know, time change. But at that particular point in time, that's exactly what the board, in my opinion, requested I did. Now, last comment I want to make is this. If you have a five thousand square feet lot and you bring in a second RV, a scouty, I notice they just stayed.
That's correct. Yes.
One lady went like that and said, Scottsdale, you don't get any of this. You know, or else you got to go into the city.
And that's where I'm at with you.
That's not where I am.
With this mission, we have an order that spells out what we said we wanted to do. But we need to go by our order. So the next thing on the agenda is deals with, um, code enforcement and them being allowed to do whatever. But if we're gonna keep this order, and it sounds like it's a good order, then we need to enforce it.
I said, that was my last comment, but I thought it was important, I meant. Most of the train talk here, they didn't come back to me and then, uh, we're going to be alerted.
The extra units on the lot.
Anyway, go ahead and watch it, I think what I was gonna say, but it was great part, good to me.
Well, I would say that there are two possible approaches that would help the situation. Um, as the board knows, we have two part-time code enforcement officers. One of them works twenty hours a week basically on the field for complaint purposes. And the other code enforcement officer works part-time collecting, um, money from boat ramps and writing papers. So even though we have a full-time, we have forty hours per week devoted for code enforcement, it's split into two different jobs responsibilities. And, um, if, my question is, if the board feels like that is inadequate, then I think that's something that we should consider at budget time. But we all know what it's coming, that was last year. I mean, if it's something that we could designate money to, we would have already, we would have already addressed that, it might be. So just space for thought. Another possible solution that we wanted to present to you was, um, the possibility of adding some type of penalty to issuing, and issue citations for violations of the RV density regulations. So my understanding is that the process that we currently use is that it's quite cumbersome. By the time, there are letters written and contact made and ask the citizens to do the RV and we go back and forth and they may not see, you know, within the county, they may be. And then we get to the point where we have to call in a special magistrate to hear the case. And then the special magistrate makes a room, so you see where I'm going with it. So our question is, did we treat this as we do other violations? And, and we're only asking the board to just consider, you know, citations issued for RV density and violations and attach a penalty. So the process would go much faster and, of course, we're gonna be, you know, to Conrad. But, um, and I had the code, I do, I think that the officer can't issue citations.
Right, absolutely. That person can't.
Right.
So once again, it's again, um, at the time that this was done, no one wanted to put any penalty on it. You know, the question was asked, you know, and we, you know, you finish the office, it's like finished, or we got penalty. So, um, and we hear from the community, this is fair account, you know, you got to see any penalty, you got to see yours, that sort of thing. You know, but the food's are gone and y'all decide what you want to do, then, you know, we'll, we'll try to do it. But I, I'm just saying, at the time, at the time in the hearing that we had, I, I go back to the, uh, the ones when we did E, ones with the animals and the dogs and the trees. I mean, I mean, I was way out in the shop, but, um, so, uh, you know, but those things you might want to think about, how do your constituents, do your constituents want penalty? What are they, you know? Because again, just like Juan said, you can probably, if you want them to work. But if you don't have somebody that can enforce them, and we don't have someone who will rule for you when you go before whoever, then what's the point? See what I'm saying here?
Right, but, but, you know, within a little while, and things have changed in the years. Because if you go down there and you look around now, it's greatly changed in many years. And so now is the time, I think, that we need to follow our order and we need to give our code enforcement officer the ability to do what he needs to do right there in Vegas. If that, if that goes through, right, all this stuff, and, and take care of it.
I think that would satisfy our citizens more. I think that it would help our staff because it would be such a laborious process. I don't know how many I feel about, I keep doing, like.
Yeah, I'm talking about not taking something else with those kinds of obligations like I do both. It, it'll be worse, I can tell you after dealing with the public at the moment. You don't know, the government's got this.
My witness comes back to me, not gonna make my point, but him. If I buy a lot, Peter Island, and I sign, I want a RV down there, or two, three, whatever. Is there any permitting process when you come to the building, you get a permit?
There's an RV power pole.
You, if you get the electrical permit for the power pole. I was thinking, you know, we need to, they, they know where all these RVs are. Who's grandfathered in, who isn't grandfathered in? Is there, is there some document that shows all that?
There is, from what I understand, it's a laborious process that building planning has these records as far as who has been issued permits for what. And so whenever our code enforcement officer receives a complaint, it's not like you can just immediately issue a citation or a letter or an order to move your RV. You have to, and that's why the grandfathering as part of the ordinance does make things more complicated, um, than they would be without it. But I, I'm not saying why the board included that. I, I will just say that I think that unintended consequence of including this grandfathering clause was that it does create, um, a pro, an additional process for our staff.
Now, if I want to build a house, I gotta go get a permit. They see. If I want to do a nice RV under a big shed, I guess you have to get a building permit for the shed.
I believe so, yes.
But the RV is.
A lot of them don't, they do, but they can't.
If that happens, it will not be.
It happens. Help you guys, just wait, I'll give you a chance to call.
If that, if that happens, then. If that happens, then all of us receives a complaint. And we send a code enforcement officer out and investigate. I wish things were different, but I will say that at twenty hours a week, code enforcement officer, from what I understand, his work time is spent answering, him addressing citizen complaints. We don't have, we're not structured so that he's out on the road, roving, looking for a violation. I believe that's hard to accomplish in twenty hours a week. And I understand that people may have a different opinion than that, but twenty hours a week is what he has to devote to his house.
Well, right now, I mean, he can respond to, uh, complaints that come in.
Yeah.
Okay, and, and take care of that, but one thing I wanna get back to, that Commissioner Page was talking about, this grandfather stuff. Whatever we decide, I'd like to make sure, for sure and certain, that he has a list of grandfathered properties. So then, so-and-so makes a, another complaint, we do.
Yeah.
That he knows that those are threatening these people when their grandfathers in.
And that's part of the process, which makes it a longer process, which in turn is very frustrating to, I would say, the citizens in those particular areas. Because, you know, it, he works double day week, he doesn't work Monday to Friday, and, you know, he gets a complaint, he starts the process, he has to check to see his grandfather's.
Yeah, if he's got the list, then you can refer to it, and anybody that gets a call, he's got that list. You can leave that in the book right there, this one's grandfathered in. And so, we could go on to the next one then, that, that's no exception of that.
So, I, I will say that numerous staff and commissioners get numerous calls when there's a violation. So, unfortunately, it's something where there may be several of us asking, what about this place? What about this place? What about this place? And then, if there are violations, it's not typically an instant action. I mean, you don't have lightning sirens on our vehicles, you can't jerk the RV out. And we have a tendency to give people an adequate amount of time to relocate. I mean, there, there are typically situations where we may give them a certain amount of time to relocate. It's not something that happens instantly, and I, I understand how frustrating that is for citizens, the residents of this area.
Yeah, and you've got the additional, I think if someone does not live there, and they live in Georgia somewhere, and, you know, how, you know, you have to, they have to have time to be notified. So, that's a, an additional issue that we need to take into consideration.
And that causes angst, which I understand, and, and. Which is the reason we wanted to ask. If we had citations with a penalty associated, is that something that the board might consider if it passes Congress, if it's any way, if so?
I would choose to do that.
And, and I would too, and I think that just, if the citizens know that we're stepping up and we're trying to do something about this situation. Everybody knows, or they should know, that nothing happens in government right now. It takes a little bit of time, but at least we're showing an interest and trying to enforce our ordinance. And, um, that, I think that would satisfy a lot of people. Right now, I think people think it would be enough.
I understand that, I understand. And, and I don't, and I, I just, I feel like I have a very understanding of both sides. I just wish that we had the ability to offer more, but I think we all know the concerns with having a part-time United States. This is the reality of having a part-time code enforcement officer.
When we deal with what we can afford, if we can afford twenty hours, that's what we've got. If we can afford forty hours, that's fine, but if we can't, we have to live within our means and do what we're able to do.
And that is, is that the base of the issue? And it continues to be a big downgrade. We need to look at, we're gonna grow here, and I, I be rooting for it. You've got two part-time code enforcement, that's twenty, twenty hours a week. How are you fishing with that? This is a large thing, and how do we grow, and what do we come in? It's two part-time code enforcement, and we fishing it up in there?
That's kind of my point.
I don't know what I mean, reiterate this.
Right.
You run a law order, and there's no way that that's gonna happen. You have no way to enforce a law. Now, by the entitlement of having two part-time code enforcement, how much force revenue is accounted for?
How much?
Force revenue is accounted for.
Uh, they're not charged.
Well, I mean, if we add a penalty in order, uh.
Look, I wasn't here when that, but it looks like somebody was doing favors, somewhere along. The grandfather thing, uh, can't go that way, it's a grandfather thing. And if you say it, you know, if, if, if we gonna grow like they say we gonna grow, and one, one piece of shit off, one side.
I believe, and I was going by memory, because I was here at that time. I think that the, the decision to grandfather was made for people who had purchased property with that intent. They wanted to use these particular lots for fixing, you know, they wanted to take their family there, they wanted to fix, they wanted to install it, and they wanted to utilize their property. And I think where maybe things went a little sideways was when the grandfathering was applied to the property, and then, once the, and these, so many of these properties have been, have been used a number of times, but they're still grandfathered. So, the grandfather clause is being applied, applied to the property, not to the owner. So, I think that has been frustrating for some people.
I love to tell you what.
Yes, it is.
But I was like, I was, I was elected to see a, you know, the payment life, or I was like. And I, in one, one situation, I had someone to call me, they had purchased the property with the sole intent of sitting in RVs there. They went and bought what he had in place, they went and they got all the property, so many, they did everything that was supposed to do, and they were given the overhead to do that. Then, we had a certain mom that said, oh, we don't want that. And for our son on that issue, did people bought the property, they called it, and they called us all the laws that were in place, they did what they were supposed to do, now you're gonna tell them after they've done that, that they can't do it? And so, no, you wouldn't do that either, you know? Angst. Hold on, you'll have to stand, okay?
So, direction, technical word? Is this something that you would like me to speak with comrades and the team, and all that, and, and start going out and have, and exploring that as a possible option?
For me, yes.
We're gonna, we're gonna, say, uh.
And if the guests were coming through, and so we're gonna handle this with them.
So, so we can start that, well, I can, we can start the dialogue with comrades and the citizens and the teammates.
We can put it on the agenda, connect greater need, if you can, uh, if you're funny to, uh, figure out an order, that's what they want. Prepare an amendment here.
Is that something that you need to set up or is it?
No.
Okay.
Not when you put a penalty, you know, they don't.
Well, I, I'm sure, because I know that we have, I don't know if that falls within the same per due of, like, being able to issue citations for boat ramps and that.
No, I think it's, it's, it's that. And, our other right to ordinance, you know, ten minutes to do it, leave a blank for their, them.
Yeah.
And we'll have some further discussion about whether it's five dollars or five hundred.
What it says here is not to exceed, uh, five hundred dollar purchase violation, under.
We already got a penalty.
Well, they hit that conversation.
We already got it, we're blocking them for.
Yeah.
We already got it, you already got it, and sure, I think it'll be.
But it does not, no, and no of that qualifies exceeding, like, five hundred, so that kind of cost it, it could be a dollar, it could be five hundred. So, how are you gonna decide?
You're gonna fill in that blank with comrades, right, you need to be tested on it.
Yes, it does, because then you don't want, oh, what is it?
I don't like this topic.
Now, what I'm gonna do now, is, I'm gonna, uh, I have four, four, uh, comments from the public, and we come forward with a section, and we have, we have three minutes, and I believe I'll come with answers.
We're with the man.
Personal that we've had, um, in reference to your conversation about the building department, we have, and you're aware, we, well, we have three lots down there that, where the people have lots, don't have a problem with RVs, and they have first, but the ordinance is a lot. We called Danny, Danny started his job, he sent a guy out, tells the guy he can't sell, bring camper here. Okay, the guy says, okay, I'll lose my camper, so he loses a camper. Since Danny was gone, he came in with another camper and put it back in. Now we have four campers hooked up on one system, the other one didn't run across the line. That's what they do, but all Danny's back, no one's along, he's being serious, so he didn't tie back down to the very side, which, that's reasonable. And then Danny comes back, he says, well, now we're gonna have to write him a letter. So, he's gonna write him a letter, that's another thirty days, it's been going on for like three, four months. So then, once the guy gets the letter, he's like, well, the campers are still there, it just, it just rolls and rolls and rolls, no one's ever done.
We understand that, and that's what we're trying to do, we're trying to, you know?
Exactly, and I'm, I'm just giving you, it's going on. Another thing that the board can give us too, that you haven't, you don't have any ordinancees that I'm aware of, is the little tiny homes that are planted in. They're not considered an RV, and they're not considered a travel trailer or a home home.
Part model.
They're safely part model, but it's stable, they call them tiny homes, because they're small. They're, they're putting them on the ground, they're putting the air conditioner on the ground, and we have no orders to, to change it. If the only one that has the air conditioner on the ground, uh, my residents, I can't even have it on the ground down there. Have to be jacked up. They're not allowed to be trapped through the ground, they are, they're on permanent, um, blocks and such as that. So, it's something that I'm going to address, and so it's something that I'm having to patent, and it's on, I just ask the board to that. They call me, um, tiny homes.
Yeah, you could lay them on, play them on. I was gonna draw this up, table code for, this is section four, about five hundred dollar fine. I didn't know y'all knew about that. You know, in the water origin district, maybe you can understand why. You throw it in there right now, right, break it.
You get my phone?
Next door is that. No, no. That's a little mound with the sign.
Well, I, I called a camper, I don't know, what do you want me to do?
Well, this is right at the end of my straight here appetite, and this is for sale. Lot for sale, many of them are sold up, the two campers and the scallop, and the twenty-four, I call it concrete slab, and they don't have five dollars for everything, but they got pretty long there right now. So, uh, but.
That's one of these checks on board.
Is that, is that one with the RV?
They would be, I would, I would definitely get that.
They, does that, like, does that the end of their walk, or the beginning of the walk, to determine?
Well, it's right next to, uh, Gary's house, right there on the corner.
When did he leave that?
Recently.
The house on the corner, I don't know, but anyway, he, he went and put up a fence the other day, so we wouldn't have to, look at that. But anyway, I want to tell you something, play about numbers, numbers big, which is why you're not asking me to watch it. I don't know what the point is, I didn't, I just wanted to probably just come over and get some, for a living. Can I go in and do number seven?
Yes, yes.
Well, I like to jazz, you know, the boat ramp thing. You know, five of us is really a joke. Because we got so many people coming from out of town, and we need to raise that at a minimum of ten dollars, that's not gonna pay none of them. And you can, uh, if you're the third, well, that would give us money for the code enforcement officer. And, uh, you can also own the garbage heap. You know, if they got two trailers on a lot, both of them can be jarred. The trailer, I mean, garbage heap, because they're both using the roll off, I, I might give her a tip. Uh, you know, my neighbor, you know, he comes down for seven days, like, every two months, but he, they last place the same time, you know? And, um.
Hold on just a second. The, the, the hundred and forty dollars is for, uh, for each, I don't know, probably different hand.
Right.
If you have electricity, that's a hundred and forty.
Is that, is it assessed for?
RVs.
For leasing, right. It's assessed per resident, so home.
Per resident, meaning?
Per home versus RVs. So, it's supposed to be assessed per number of RVs, if you have.
If you're on E, you're gonna pay the garbage.
And also, do they, do they, should they have to hook up to the store and reorder?
Well, can they share? That's up to the Taylor, um, coastal water sewers district to, if I may say, it's something that, um, they are considering right now, and they have some concerns about infrastructure, and after their board meeting, we may be requesting, you know, a meeting, a board meeting.
Yeah, and going to that's right for them, okay.
This town, this town, Jamie's right, behind me, I got four trailers. They have one mile proposal on one lot. They have four RVs, they have four lines, dr- drunk, you know, drunk across the ground, all of these. One section, just from one household, and they're all paid in one garbage heap.
And one water bill, huh?
They have one water, and one, I don't know.
But we need to have a, we got some other solutions on how to pay the code enforcement officer. We've got to have some money.
Now, let me go back to your suggestion about increasing the boat ramp fees. We take that for years, and every time we talk about this, we're, uh, goddamn. First of all, the boat ramps, we put it out there, it's some sort of rent money. And the folks are not too, uh, receptive to, uh, to pushing the fees of boat ramps. And that money in the generating goes back into boat ramps, not to code enforcement.
Correct.
So. Tim, you wanna go on that boat ramp ride again, and raise those fees?
He is here, tell us. I'm here, I'm helping, you know? We're glad, well, anyway, I'm taking a little bit of all of them out of my ear. Like I had those people, even at last, I walked over there, and the crowd was all washed up. He knows your body, he's about a year of my, this is something that people go out on the emergency, they have to file for, for outside house. So, I'm learning how to, how to, it's a good, it's a quality. So, I, we have to come up with money to pay a code enforcement officer. They have money, you know, for him, we can have a full time, and I make him work what he wants to do with y'all, but he's got a family and children and stuff like that. But we got to come up with solutions to get some money. That's what y'all, I don't have.
Well, by the time you come back, September, figure out what we'll get.
Well, I'm trying to come up with something, I'm.
Yeah, all right, you can. You create.
Unfortunately, we've got a lot of those situations where we need to come up with money to fund the effort, to fund the funding. It's a whole.
We're pretty, we're pretty careful.
But, I mean, I understand, totally understand what you're saying, and, and we're dedicated to trying to find a solution.
Okay, we're gonna get one.
We're gonna work on it. And it's, it's, uh.
Okay, okay, thank you, Karen. I'm Karen Yellen, I live at Houston Beach. First of all, um, when you spoke about the people trying to get appropriate, or they don't need permits, not yet, and they were allowed to leave their trailer there, when they changed the rules, we did that full time. The person you're talking about, was it before or after they changed the ordinance, um, building them in and out, every six months?
It was, it, it was, it was just before I came on the board, someone had bought property with the sole intention of putting a RV there too, because they couldn't afford to build a house. And so, their concern was that they went through the process, and then they were seated it, for whatever reason, didn't really like that idea. So, we, we're not gonna give somebody a permit and tell them, yeah, you can do this, and they buy land and do that, and just say, no, you can't.
So, was it for six months, ten, and six months out, or did they buy it for the whole year round?
I don't know.
Well, when I, the way I remember it, at time, it was six months, ten, and six months out, and that's when I'm, yeah, they presented. Well, when I, the way I remember it, at the time, it was six months, ten, and six months out, and that's when, um, yeah, they presented to the board to change it to be there full time. And it said they all be allowed, people all be allowed to do their property if they wanted to, because they couldn't afford to sell the house. So, to let them stay year round, but it didn't, and now, so when we first, our house, when we would never purchase it and try to stay there year round, it was then an act. So it's like, well, we were not considered those of us who were already engaged, and it was just passed. And moving on, that's, I just wanted to make that statement. And moving on, I just wondered how many of you have been down there and looked at that piece of land. It, it's sad. The trailers are everywhere, they have a little house there, then there will be some metal buildings there. And people are sleeping in those metal buildings. So something has got to be to fall down there, just from looking at it from a person coming down inside. I've had looks, like people tell me, that it was very trashy down there. And you go down the beach road, and just look, they have these little trailers down there, it is such an eyesore. I mean, let's clean up the community as a whole, it's sad, we want roads here. And, but it's more familiar when you're looking at the trash, because people are not maintaining their trailers on the beach roads, and they're in water flow, and it just goes all the way down the beach, and all the way down to the ocean. So I'm just asking the board to take a look, and let's just clean up the community, and ask the board, if we got one, let's keep them. Because I've been, I've been one of those colleagues every week, when are you gonna get that trailer moved, when are you gonna get that trailer moved? Well, it takes time, I understand that, but six weeks, or then they say, well, the trailer's placed, we can't get it free, we can't get it out any of the places. It just goes on and on. So that's all I'm asking, is that we give these ordinance, put them in place, and as far as the code enforcement officer, I would feel like Dan Brown, that is working eight, ten hours a week. So I don't know what you'd accomplish in eight, ten hours, we, we just come in and answer your phone calls. And it's just on people, it's not coming, because I've, I've been working today.
Thank you. So, that's, that's here, it's for me. I have one suggestion about the code enforcement officer. I can call up the Taylor County Property and Frigidares website on my phone, and look down there, and I can see exactly what year these people have powerful. He should be able to do the same thing, if he has a smartphone or tablet, a portable printer, he could print a citation as he stands it. Unless there was a question about when the power pole was put in, he should be able to go ahead and print citations, post it on that trailer at the same time. There shouldn't be any reason why you would have to go back and forth and back and forth, unless he cannot show when the power pole was put in. Um, my other question is about when you guys grandfathered everybody in, I have no problem with watching out for them. I, I don't, I mean, if someone wants to come down, bring their RV and enjoy the property, but if the people who have four, and, you know, on, on one lot, small lot, as people, that are grandfathered in, and being able to use all our services, pay very little, and using it when there was really no reason to grandfather a multi, a multi-RV property. Why, I mean, at the time, there were very few that had multiple RVs, um, um, probably at least less than five. But because you guys said the thing about the power pole, that has let every community carry, bring multiple RVs in under that ordinance. And so it's my suggestion that you may want to streamline your ordinance a little bit further in state that the grandparent in was one total property, not multiple, and they, they would be allowed to bring in a D C one. Before, if they had ten thousand square feet, they didn't have two. But there are properties down there with three, and four, five trailers, that are small pieces of property that are grandfathered in. And I think that's where the county has got into a lot to come with, the grandfathering process. Is that these people continue, and they trade them out, if they sell the property, another guy comes in and he's gonna have a three, he brings four. So it, I think that's one of the problems. But I just wanna say, for free money purposes, the code enforcement officer could issue a citation on the lot. He would not have to come back and forth, and, and if, if he had, I think he didn't give a phone call to Andy, but it could be done right then and there. And if someone pulled in on Friday night, they've got a citation on their camper, they're gonna do something about it. But if they're waiting for a week, month, for letters and things, they're gonna sit there. And we, we feel like that, and just like we said, we've combined that, that, that process has not been efficient.
Right, we're trying to-
And that's one of the suggestions, just give them a tablet and a paper, and that's it. That's right, and, and, and I get questions all the time, that's the Water and Sewer District, why are there six, you know, why are there five RVs on this lot? I send my guys out, they go, oh, look at it, they say, yes, there's five, and that's the ones here, I don't even talk about, they're not supposed to be. And all I had to do was look it up on, you know, the property frigidares website, and say, well, they're not even grandfathered in. You know, they don't have enough square feet, they're thinking of one camper right now. So if I can look it up, you know, that guy can, and still in the public, and that's part of the direction, every member of the public can call. Say, you need to go to the website and look to see when their power pole was put in on the property. That will let you know if they're exceeding the limits of what's allowed down there. But you might want on the side, that is a little bit about the multiple units, because I think that is the biggest problem with that. Thank you, good idea.
I'm gonna ask about, I'm trying to, if, if, if you have grandfathered someone in for something, you know, that's what it is. But if you have, you would assume if you came back there and said, oh, we're trying to, I know you can't do that, but I think that seems like there's something wrong with that.
Two cameras, you do even anyone? I, I would agree that if you grant some father, someone in, their grandfather in. Um, and I've heard the thing, you can do what you want to, yeah, you can do what you want to, but then you might end up being in court determining whether what you did was correct, you know, and you might have your suspicions on that. Um, and again, times change, um, people change, the community changes, try to keep up with it, you know, with as best you can. But like, um, instead, you know, you need to know exactly who was in fact, and followed in. What's that many of?
And on our back commitment. Well, and it doesn't address multiple units at all, in the ordinance at all, it doesn't, it just says, if you had a power pole, you can have your RV there. It doesn't say anything about if you had four campers and a power pole, it just says if you have your power pole, you can continue to have more than one at a time, but it doesn't say you can have three or four.
It doesn't say that.
Right, and that's where you guys could say, well, we need to clarify this, is that one RV for five thousand square feet, even if you had a power pole then, because you're giving unfair advantage to the people that had a power pole in two thousand and five. They can go ahead and bring four campers in on their fifty by one hundred lot, and the guy next door can only have one, and sit, sit there and scold it to you. So you're almost discriminating against the newer buyers by allowing the older people to keep that multiple use on there.
Well, that grandfathering on the power pole, I was here, and I'm being opposed to that. But, but, my, my thought was that you could be grandfathering for the one, and, and another on the scalding.
Yes.
And you'll pop this, this, in our, you mentioned sometime, Lonnie Abrams, who cares, and I remember. And your friend, Lonnie, your friend who bought the lot, and had the power pole, and he bought it with the full intention, that his friends are gonna put an RV, well, you know, the fact he's not in a tax position, he's gonna have, he's gonna look for it. So, uh, you know, what we're trying to pop this bad was, you can put an RV down there, and then every six months, you have to take it out and move it. And then you, you bring it back. It was a massive budget, and he's there, well, look.
And it's, it's still there.
It's still there, still there, yeah, yeah. I don't know, we, we make some good decisions, and we go through this process, and be on the good, and then that's, you know, that we're, we're great there.
Yes.
But I think we can fix that, that's good.
And, uh, the other thing I wanted to address is, by having mo, allowing these multiple units, and allowing it to continue, as the water, the Water and Sewer District down there, we're starting to have to look at the amount of use that we're having to, or, not service, we're having to do with these people. And when it was platted, when the Water and Sewer District was put in, it was, the sewer plant was designed for one hookup, for lots, for platted lots. And so if we have a guy with four RVs on there, that's using four times the amount of, um, service that he's supposed to have, and our plant starts to reach its limit, we may not be able to provide John Smith, who has owned a lot down there since the beginning of time, and decides to build a house. We may have to say, we're sorry, we can't support you under our plant, which is really contrary to what our plant was designed to do, for the original property, or one hookup, one residential hookup for a lot. So we are gonna start, uh, we talked with Alana, that we're gonna start studying to see how much of an influence all that use it is on our plant, because we also, as we spoke, if we decide to change some things, and say you can only have one hookup per lot, we have a stick that you all don't have. We can go in and turn off the Water and Sewer, if they don't, um, you know, if they wouldn't comply, or if there was a change in the rules.
Okay, well, let's say that for another reason, and we can, and another one, help whatever, you know?
Right, and that's what we'll discuss that, but, right, and I thought this might be with your limiting maybe of the multiple units, is that there's a finite number of gallons that we can block that, and so that's why we're gonna have to get that.
Yes, I agree. You first come from Trailer City, you call, speak up. Uh, I was just gonna mention that I thought, I always thought that the grandfathered was going with the person, and when they told it, it no longer applies. Because it's ridiculous to have a lot with four trailers on a tiny lot, and then have them sell it, and then have four more trailers come in. I think it should go with the person.
I agree with that.
I agree with that.
I agree with that. That is saying that, that is saying, but you find, you make that fine, five hundred dollars is cheap, and I, if I can have an RV down there for five hundred dollars, I'll be free.
Yeah, but you make that other five hundred dollars, that's-
Well, that's what I'm saying, you need to increase it, you need to be sure that there's an increase in there, because if they don't do it now, it's higher than that. I'd like you to send me a five hundred, just go back to trailer, that's all.
And you didn't wear a shirt.
Yeah.
Jim Thorpe, Steve Hatchey, uh, most of the discussion is about Keaton Beach, right? You know, the Seer.
Not necessarily, no.
But Steve Hatchey doesn't have all, have the intensity of this issue, it really doesn't, because, um, I don't know, there's, was it, uh, of a lot of small lots that only have five thousand, and they got four, and I live there every day. I, but people in Steve Hatchey, we really rely on these RV folks. If you took away, if you cut all the, half the RVs out of Steve Hatchey, a lot of the money that comes in, these are RV people, most people go on the home in Steve Hatchey. They have an RV. So if we go forward with this, make sure the issue we're applying, I guess, as Commissioner says, that, uh, an issue with a five thousand square foot lot and four trailers, or, or RVs, is just too many. I mean, anybody that's been arguing that, that this should be okay, it's a law, I would say it's a law. And, but I think we got a good ordinance, with two RVs per, of like a fifty by two hundred foot lot.
One, one.
Two. Mm-hmm.
One for five thousand.
That's how many you take, like, two hundred?
Okay, so you get two, right.
During coffee, hold on, ma'am.
Well, I just went through that, I put six, you know, but we have a thing in Steve Hatchey, you go down there and look, if somebody owns ten lots, and they're fifty by two hundred, they can put twenty RVs.
But then you become an RV park.
Oh, yes, but then you, but technically, no, you're individual lots, because we've never lost our identity. Uh, when you have ten lots, it might be for tax purposes, but still, I can break out and sell those individual lots. So it only looks that way on the property frigidares site, right?
Yes.
And for combining it for taxes, so we, this is an issue. Now, I, I did book some RVs, they're all legal, uh, covered RVs, nice and stuff in Steve Hatchey, next to the landing, good, pretty, things can look good there, people. But, uh, I had three fifty by two hundred foot deep lots, and I called five, it was six RVs, six nicely covered. Gravel driveway, everything, nice power, along the sewer system, but I also paid for six sewer hookups. Okay, because I was gonna put townhouses in there way back in the day.
So they six, garbage, that's one-
No, I don't, because, when, if I'm correct, a RV that's part-time use doesn't use the water and sewers, only when somebody's living full time in that thing, because you possibly use four times more than, four RVs with people coming on the weekends could never use, what, four individual houses.
You're talking about solid work.
The solid work, no, they, they pay one hundred and forty dollars for, or whatever it is for that lot, because it's improved.
Well, that's, I'm not looking at the way that works. You have six RVs, you pay six times one third of what you're paying.
Six times one third, okay, whatever, okay, I never looked at it, it's almost half, you know? But, yes, we're not paying just a hundred, I figured it was a hundred and forty. I can't fault it, because I have individual RVs.
Two people solid, that's scary.
Well, I think so.
That's another solid.
Yeah.
Yeah, they did, I think so.
Right, thank you.
Would I be the one?
Yes.
I just wanna say a couple things, you know, that I was listening, uh, on code enforcement, I know that there's a constraint and so forth, that, um, that you're mentioning about, no parking and so forth. And the sheriff doesn't enforce that, but the code enforcement officers do have citations, so as you build that program out, uh, keeping them down there on weekends, not only to get a portion of boat rent fees, but they can also write citations for the people that are really busy with parks. Um, I mean, that's, uh, that is an ordinance. Uh, also, uh, to Mr. Nurburgring's credit, uh, you know, he did build this out, uh, and did it all legally, but as you, as you, um, consider and explore, uh, the ordinance, and improving the ordinance, remember that, uh, that even with coastal properties only, and where Mr. Nurburgring's property is, probably is not under the coastal realm, so he would not fall under that portion of the ordinance. The ordinance is, that was talking about tonight, that deals with Seer, I was, what is, for coastal flood.
I know.
Uh, so, uh, much of Steve Hatchey is, while those campers are, it's kind of a different situation, uh, standing out in a coastal flood plain. A lot of them are moving, now closer to the mouth, but, uh, that's a topic that you consider, uh, as you, you know, improve that, that one.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah.
Yeah.
You heard the problem, that's the hard model, multiple homes. And also, the definition of a multiple home, which is typically being moved with a light duty pickup truck, which to me, the light duty pickup trucks are empty vehicles, you know, maybe. These hard model homes, you have to call wreckers to come down there, they have to jack them up, unblock them, put the wheels back on them. And Florida statute, I don't know which one it is, hard model mobile home is not to be in a velocity zone here. And I, I don't know, I'll have to, I'll have to go find it, they're not supposed to be there.
That's right.
Yeah, and another thing, this, in a way, it has something to do with what we're doing. Did y'all read the newspaper this week, about the F W C in the Southwest District?
Yeah.
Is wanting to reduce our trap limits, from five to three.
Yeah.
Now, as a county, all of the county, we have to fight that, because you talk about an economic disaster. I mean, for our county, Glenn and them wouldn't be able to rent more houses, my customers are not coming.
You got a call, a man joined us this morning, I'm in there, yeah.
Well, they got me in town, Hatchey made the first, I can't be there, but I have to be eventually. But we need to have somebody from the county up there. And the problem is, they had a lady down in Bozeman last fall, so standing there with a clip bow, or checking boats, and they come in. Now, for me, catching fish is not a problem, because that's what I do. But ninety percent of the people that come to Taylor County, they don't know how to catch a fish. You know, they might go out there, and they have three or four of the high fish, and they come in, that's what shows up on the clip bow, but there is- But there is thousands and thousands of trout out there. Last month, up north up there on Yorss Park, I could pull up there and there were eight hundreds of trout just running everywhere. You could catch, I could catch fifteen trout in fifteen years, is how many trout is out there, thousands. But people don't know how to catch them, is what, what the problem is. So they say, oh, there's no fish out there, let's reduce the numbers. But that's not the case.
Okay, so it's May the first?
May the first.
Would you, uh, let our, um, county administrator know more about authorities, how, everything?
Just on the, just on the FDC, where I, I have to get that, that, that.
Will you check on that reform and send us a notice, uh, so this should be, what should, somebody should be there.
Well, if, if they implement that, my customers, you know, if I take two people, they're not gonna pay you four hundred dollars for I catch six fish. Because when they go home, they won't have fish fry. You know, that's the reason for them, I mean, they got some who wants to do catching the fish. But I don't think that, not my people do. And that'd be a happy disaster, I mean, for the whole coastal area down there. You won't, you, if they do that, you won't have to worry about none of this, so they won't, nobody will.
Well, we, we, we got you, we got you, we're gonna, you're gonna, and, and some of us try to.
You're a child, okay.
Mm-hmm.
But, uh, it affects my business, mine, your path, and real, you know, it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a bad thing.
Sure, yeah.
We don't have our county, that's like.
Good, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I guess everything that needs to be said happens, but it's, all right, these couple people are back.
Yes, thank, thank you.
I'm Bill Grant, I'm in East Little Beach.
If you come up here, we can hear you.
Can everybody hear me? I brought enough couple people to my back, it's all right. I have to indulge this little fish.
You've done that a lot, Tom, before, Bill, don't complain about it.
Yeah. Look, I, I grew up here, this is my hometown, uh, like a lot of you. My, my folks were here before, before the state, before this was Taylor County, before it was even Madison County. I went off from home and I came, I came back, and I have to tell you, I was shocked at the degradation of the environment of this county. Shocked, particularly at the beach. It's a place we love, we grew up in this place, and we ought to be protecting it, not finding loopholes and excuses for people to come in and sprout like prickly pears all over the place, you know? But I'm surprised that some enterprising defense lawyer, personal injury lawyer, has it sued the county on the basis of the degradation of property values based on the proliferation of these so-called recreational vehicles. It is, it, it will be, it may, you don't know how much your value has been, your property has been devalued, until you go to sell it. But when you go to sell it, it's obvious, it's not worth as much as it used to be. Are we always gonna be the low-rent district of Florida? Are we going to allow this to happen? Are we gonna have some backbone and put some real teeth into a code that means something? A real code? And this commission has the opportunity to do that. I wish you would do that, and I wish you would put some real teeth into the enforcement, no matter what it says. This is a beautiful case, look at the picture behind you. This is what this county is about, this is why people come here to start with. We ought to be about protecting it, not destroying it, and not destroying its value, no matter what that value may be. It may be estate value, it may be property value, it may be environmental value, but we are totally secure to see those values destroyed. The last thing you need is somebody from Alabama saying you want to do, but I'm never going out again. And I'm sort of like that, this part of our country, and they asked him about to describe, to, to describe on our, and he said, well, I can't describe it, but I know it when I see it. Well, I know what degradation is, I may not be able to put it in that ordinance quite right, but I know it when I see it. And this county is being eroded. I ask you, I plead with you, to take this opportunity that you have as the leaders of this county to put real teeth into a real code.
Hi, Bill, um, I didn't. All right, I'm ready for it. Everyone, come on. Uh, as a real estate broker, lots for people, RVs are great for me. I sold two this year in Ohio, and I'm on third, so good for me. I'm not against RVs, I am against the high density, we're relaxed. We only county in the state of Florida that allows personal ownership of RVs on, in the high, has their own, the only county. We're only one of six counties in the state that allow RVs off the outside by having a gun, on personal property. Everywhere else, it's gotta be an RV lot. You, you say that you want to look to the future. In the last seven years, we've had big changes, I don't think two things can tell you that. I mean, the word's out that Taylor County is the RV capital of the state, and people come here, it's like they call, I mean, call every day about RV lots. So if you want to do the right thing, look fifteen years down the road. We might have to get in step in line with the rest of the state, and we may have to save that RV, just like everybody else. I realize that's a burden for all of us who own property. I have an RV, right, but I, I don't have a lot, and I have it though. I have it because I do live on the coast, and when that storm, Michael comes to here and I no longer have a house, that's when I'm gonna be living in, so. So, look fifteen years down the road, make your decision on how can we accommodate what we have now, yet make subtle, slow changes, gonna make a cut.
Thank you. We're gonna move on to item number eight. The board's gonna discuss the county's term of permit application. So our, um, permitting for a turnoff permit, which is a turnoff permit for the Land cottage driveway. The citizens, uh, this is, um, resident citizens coming to the building department, and they say, I don't need. We report their intention and it's forwarded to the public works department. Um, the citizen is then responsible for having the culvert installed, having the dirt installed on top of the culvert, and then we deliver a load of pine logs over that area, and we maintain it from there on out. So this is a simple explanation of what the five dollars get you when you, when you request a turnoff permit. Five dollars, for five dollars, you get a, you know, about a hundred and twenty dollars worth of rock. Plus the later and the time, yeah, I mean, all that, so we're cutting up room. Well, and, and, and this item kind of leaves in permit, but, so this is a brief history on this turnoff permit. And it was brought to my attention last week and the week before I came, that there were some citizens who were very concerned because we are issuing, issuing turnoff permits for access from one of our collector roads. And one, one road in particular is B Road. Well, it's not part of our process to verify if that is the only means of access to that property or if that's a secondary means of access, because it's issued by the building department, and they don't do any research. They, they were tasked with this, actually, I think they volunteered for this, um, task, to make it easier for people to, to, when they're going through the permitting process. You come to the building department, they pay the five dollars, they get their permit, get sent to public works. They expect to make sure that the, the culvert height isn't installed properly, the protection and the dirt is on there, and so on and so forth. Well, this, this really came up because there's concerns from citizens that we are issuing permits off these roads, which would entail people pulling vehicles across army walking trails. Now, if we wanna understand the trails, there's already turnoffs in that area, and the trails, the walking trails can withstand that type of traffic. But it brought up an, an interesting point, that maybe we should have a secondary level of review. And we should consider whether or not we want to grant access off of a collector road instead of a local road. So this again is something to start the dialogue about, about this process, to see if the board would consider allowing us to add a secondary level of review, which could be the public books director or becoming an engineer, and, and track that particular permit application to, to determine if that is something that, that should be granted.
You know, I don't think a person should walk in, ask somebody to come home, and it's a dumb deal. Some of all of these are very far, they have another way, that, that they have another means to get in and out. If they do, they should not get that permit. Number two, if they are granted a permit, they don't have any other way in, then certainly five dollars is not enough. We should at least cover our expenses.
I don't, I don't disagree. I'm not sure, when I spoke to staff, um, they, I was told, that's what it's been as long as I can remember. So, and, and I, and I apologize, I haven't had time to research to the minute why, if there may have been a reason for that. So I don't wanna fight them in that position, I'm just asking, is that something that we should reconsider? And, you know, reconsider the cost of the permit, reconsider access, and, you know, and reconsider putting in a secondary level of approval. I think, you know, it's not in you.
Yeah, yeah, I think they're all against it, especially five dollars.
I think one thing, they come up back, suddenly, and go with the storm, with a lot of these culverts that were put in, they're, they're golfing in, it comes with culvert, and the county has to go in and clean that culvert out, which is a bit more difficult.
Oh, yeah, we have, uh.
I'm thinking of a maintenance of it.
Right, yeah, right.
And even a load of lime rock, and putting lime rock in five dollars.
Oh, well.
And that, that was probably implemented ten years ago.
It was.
Yeah, I would have, yeah, I would have. What you're running into, if you, if you call Melvin Malin, the sand boyer, to get that load of lime rock, he'd cost you three hundred dollars.
Yeah.
And, and that's including trucks, driving, fuel, and everything. So really, give them the three hundred dollars, take it there for five dollars.
Well, we should consider the cost of the lime rock, the labor, and every other factor that, um, contributes to the cost of that, and then that would be, um, that should be the, the cost to the customer. Yeah.
I agree with you, this is a process of purpose shouldn't be about dollars. An issue came up, I do whatever it says, you don't got to turn that shit in. But a county known contractor tore up one of my culverts, and county paused it, I had to take it, just when the county takes, you, when you go by the county, the county ought to maintain that culvert, okay? They won't be, uh, so you cover it, it's anybody, I wouldn't say, but, but I agree that they, they, you, you want more money than, than sure the meat break even. I agree, it's very easy, it's part of the cost. No blame, you know, right?
Well, and again, our, our, really, I mean, that, that is a concern, that's a very scary concern, obviously. But, but the guidance that I'm looking for is more about the secondary act, you know, so, so.
You can get a secondary act that allows coming, like, turn off on maybe collector roads and crossing our walking tracks, walking.
Well, and it's not just that area, it would be any, any collector's, yes, sir.
And I think that there'd be, uh, probably a request for a turnoff permit, if they were up to the cost of, you know, if guys doesn't want to haul that load of lime rock in, this, this, this person is putting in the car, that's about cover.
Right.
Get the, get the dirt in there, the, the road cover.
Yes.
Well, while they're doing that, they can contract whoever puts the lime rock off of.
And we're not, I don't want to compete with any of our local businesses. Um, so, I'm concerned with what you're gonna think, that's a good idea.
He does say, he's got, you're gonna say, and, uh, you don't wanna say, uh, really anything, you buy your coat, and we don't go out and catch the trout, that's the catch, and right then, and you hire the local people to put in your dirt and your lime rock.
Well, don't you think that, um, I mean, if you're, if we're gonna forgive a comment with some gallons, then, uh, we should, we should have a say, because we've got people that have to spend their time to, um, issue that permit.
Well, all right, it, I don't know how long it should permit, but you better have the, uh, the last one I had, the, uh, the department had to go out, run a stack. And, uh, make a termination on the size of the culvert, all that stuff. So we all, we, the RV goes five dollars.
That's right, we need to charge for the carpet, and then, you know.
That's the other.
Oh, the contracts all that out, and sixty, I think you, how many times have we gone out a lot before?
Well, that's something that hurts, that's the next, oh, actually, that's, I.
Around nine, yeah. About how rough.
You wanna go ahead and, and get, and, I'm about number ten? Yeah, let's, and more to discuss, we're, 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 we'll have to speak to that one, yes.
Trailer City is allowed, there's culvert along that night path where these people have driveways.
That's what we're talking about.
If anyone's down there, which I'm sure we could reverse and pull back out. But, with what, fifteen years lobbying trying to get a bike van for people to be safe, riding on the road, riding their bikes, kids walking, families walking, a lot of people are starting to use this, the tourists like it, I mean, everybody likes it, it's good. But we've got people who, because now they have driveways, and have another driveway going right out on land, on their own private road, and they're putting culverts in, going out on beach roads. And that is dangerous because, you know, there's a few people who are gonna buy it a little too much, and they're gonna start using that when it's not necessary. And it isn't necessary at all, they already got a driveway, they don't need to drive out on beach roads and, and, and.
I thought you're saying, I'm, I'm thinking things about.
And if we can pull back any, I don't know if we can pull back the permit, the.
I think you can, you should, I mean, it's, it's a safety issue, absolutely, it's a, it's a, it's, we like a drive, probably, uh, bike van.
That's right, once you let the cab obligate, you don't.
I think, I think that was, and I had asked Mr. Conrad for an opinion on that, because after I started receiving phone calls, I did ask public works to just hold off, you know, let us, you know, let me bring this to the board. But I don't believe we can rescind permits that have already been issued.
You want to do the court?
No.
Well, there are also some people that are, are loading up their RVs and, and. I swear, I own a lot, and if one of these people has to have these driveways. Going forward, we're not gonna issue anymore until we get in the process, um, fifty, I'm, 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 I'm five dollar fee to do the culvert. It's not good back. I found out this about two years ago, when one of the neighbors had, the county's a river loading dirt, and they're driving, and, and they do one at five dollars. I said, what are you talking about, five dollars? They should know, just call the county, get a five dollar permit, come in and dump the, uh, the dirt in your driveway, and everybody down there has five dollars of dirt in their driveway, except for us, we bought them off.
And that's what we're saying, and I, we're gonna stop that.
Thank you, but I didn't know, you didn't know that.
I was, I was.
The culvert, I, I found out about the culvert and the five dollars about two years ago, and he was like, what's next?
Yeah, that, that's a decision.
Yeah, put in the dirt, people should develop and use them, then flee, flee retreat, the county's putting in law, and they'll turn out for five, everything. We got that stuff, and they really, they were.
I understand five dollars, but, back in the day, but the number ten, the four children, a hundred bucks, that's a football, it's land.
Okay, so, um, moving down, um, eighty to a hundred dollar yard.
About a thousand? I looked at, 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 you supply, and we were halfway, a fiscal year, we already, we did our, about eighty something percent.
Yes, and I, uh.
You make a hundred thousand on it, because, you know, we spent a lot of money on lime rock, that's because of the hell of these rains.
Yeah, right, during the rain. I, that was the estimate I received from public works, I think we could, if the board would allow it, um, if the board will approve at the next meeting, taking money from the. next meeting, taking the money from the home accounts possibly, and transferring it into road materials, I, I believe we could see how far we can go, and then.
Then you come back to.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
I'm all for that, that's just, I don't know why you wouldn't look. Go ahead, I'll look. I think I can look it up. That's the very place you get it from.
The law already funds, uh, for those money. Part of the responsibility.
There's about, uh, one point nine million in that line item, so that seemed like a reasonable for, for, for those funds, yeah.
Now, our other option, don't buy any more off, when it runs out, mark the truck.
Well, and that is not an option on the paper. I do, I do understand that possibly, you know, that's been done before, and that the drivers can be gainfully employed in other areas. But I'm just really, it's not tolerable to me to just.
Just put it right in there.
Yeah, six months into the year. I, I just, we see, I'm not.
They put it all in business for the next year.
They'll talk more, more money in the long run if you let it go, because it, it's having a whole side of the savings, and the savings cost the package, you end up.
You end up.
You end up costing you more than one, if you don't do it upfront.
This is not reasonable, and you talk about complaints, and being cussed out, and that's it. No, I, let's, let's go ahead, we'll, we'll put that on the next agenda. Let's go back to, um, number nine, the board to discuss public library hours of operation.
Well, this is, um, really in response to, I will say, to, um, to the budget, the way the budget was decreased, this current budget year. So, um, we have typically employed, six employees at the library, um, five full-time and one part-time. Um, and it's been that way for several years. Well, this, this year, after one of the positions was frozen last year, um, now we are, we have five employees, we have four full-time and one part-time. So it has become increasingly difficult to keep our library staff the way I feel like it should be. Um, because the prime hours of operation are nine in the morning till seven at night, and we're open from, I think, ten, ten to two on Saturday. So, um, and several times, um, some of our long, longer-term employees, we end up having to carry their vacation balance over from here to here, because they can't take it, because we don't have coverage at the library, which is something I would rather not do. Um, so we, we took a look at the other libraries within the consortium, and we're the only library that stays open till seven at night and is open on Saturday. So, in an attempt to live within our budget, our current budget, and looking at our budget in the, in the, you know, in the future, we are asking the board to consider allowing the library to open a half hour early in the morning, which would be eight thirty, and close up after, which would be consistent with all the other libraries in the consortium, and also be more consistent with our other department hours. And close it on Saturday, close it on Saturday. And now, I, I will say that when we look at this statistic, and I stuck with the library staff, I would say most of the patrons that come in on Saturday, come in to use the computers. So I did verify that we can continue our free Wi-Fi, and it can be, it can be access from the parking lot, even as far away as the park, from what I understand. So people would still be able to utilize their personal smart phones or their computer equipment. All they have to do is drive close to the library, and they can, you know, use our free Wi-Fi. So I think, and, and if you'll look at the numbers, um, the patron is certainly after five thirty during the week on Saturday, is much lower than it is during the week.
And our other option, will be a budgeted, uh, we're gonna have to replenish the staff, you know, add, add this person back, because you show annual, and all that.
Right.
So I think we would comp it to purpose with this. It would be a budgetary benefit. It would provide consistency with what the other libraries in the consortium do. You just, well, yes, they're not big enough to keep the library open twenty-four seven, you know, so I, I, I'll support this person today.
Would you say, though, that the eight thirty to five thirty, something like the week, is both in harmony with your conformity with the others in the.
Well, with most of them, the full-time libraries, there are, um, with most of them. Now, there are some libraries within this consortium that are only open several days a week. And, um, it's, and actually, Simone Tech is open Saturdays, um, three hours a day, but they're closed on Mondays, they're closed half a day, Wednesday, and Tuesdays and Thursdays are the only days that they're open full-time. Most, most of the other full, what I'll call the full-time libraries are open from eight thirty to five thirty, I think.
I really think that, you see, at the courthouse, there's an unsecured Wi-Fi in courtroom. So you could drive in the parking lot and use it. But a lot of them have, a lot of them have, the base unsecured system outside the building if they use, so may some of those issues be.
And it's that way now, and many often times, you know, right now, the library is not open until nine o'clock, but people will be in the parking lot at six thirty in the morning using the Wi-Fi.
But they don't have to look up to nothing, do they? They don't have to look up?
Not physically, no. They can, they can log on from the parking lot.
Is there anybody who has ten percent, eight thirty, nine thirty?
Right, yeah, well, that's, that's.
Wait, don't you want to bring that inside? Hold on, yeah, hold on. I've got a thing, we're gonna, hold on, hold on.
Okay.
No, I'm saying, if there's anybody who has ten percent, then she can bring it back to the, uh, on the next page.
I've spoken with the library staff, and they agree.
Yeah. Because they're struggling now, trying to double their schedules to make sure someone's there until seven. And we don't want less than two people manning the library at a time. So it has, it's becoming increasingly more difficult, um, and especially for court staff that, that does create a burden.
No, they, they feel that that's not an effect to do on Saturday, or, or check out work.
I don't, from my understanding, they, they feel like the, the client mix on Saturday is typically people using the computer. We would continue our outreach when we go to, we have a countywide outreach, and we're being happy, we, we would continue all of our service programming, and if nothing else, I would hope that this would allow us to, to actually earmark more funding for materials and programming. Um, yes, so I'm hoping it enhances our services, um, and, and not get away with it. And number eleven, we want to discuss under the water management district funding application. So this is a process that our committee here and our public works director, um, agree. And basically, this is a cost program application to monitor the water management district, and this would be to repair some of our existing culverts. And your packet is a list of the culvert that, um, are being recommended for repair or for replacement. Um, well, because of the deadline, this application has been submitted, what I'd like to do is put it on the next agenda, agenda, to ratify staff signature. And then we will proceed with determination of whether we provide it or not.
Good, I'm, I have no problem with.
Me either.
Yeah, and, and those culverts were spread, I saw, they spread all around, I think I got one too, Dan's got one, but.
Yeah, it's okay.
Yeah, it's okay, we all got some culvert, cause if we get them.
If we get them, if we get them.
No, nothing.
No, that's.
Good, that's, and I think y'all have to, let's, let's get them, appreciate your effort. Um, actually, that's, okay, does anybody else have anything?
I'd like to say one thing, when we're talking about that trailer on lots at, at the beach and on the waterfront, we need to associate the garbage that each one of them, county trailer, deal with, because each one of them, county, has got a kitchen just like their house does. And we need to really kind of incorporate that garbage thing into that trailer, be in there too. We need to get that on the same page, I just, give us all two, thought about that, and then just keep something on that, we're getting that first, so that'll all with us.
Now, it's the way it is, you know, uh, the RVs, they have a reduced rate, but now many people are living in these RVs. And I have a problem with that. It's, I mean, I don't have a problem with them living in them, but I have a problem with them paying only a small portion of the fee. But, you know, either we, either we go to a hundred forty for all RVs, or we got a good time, and somehow another should be given.
Is that something you want to address at, at basic time, so it's in place, that by.
Whoever gets it.
Or do you want to? Whatever you think.
We've got a certain fault, it's solid, you know, and then.
Correct.
This would help a little. And I, um, sometimes we differentiate RVs and hunting camps. You ever, the, the ring, we put this in, and we've got a person that owns five acres of land, and he's got a hunting camp, and he ended up to go to the hunting camp, and suddenly, the owner of the property got a tax bill, and he had one hundred, what is it, one hundred forty-two dollars a time for his mini hunting camp that he had? So, I don't know.
The people in the East Bay, that we call Bell, and that group, there's about seventy-five law owners, they can't even get to pay the county, but they're paying the forty-five whatever it is, they have to go out to pick it one, you know, but they, by the rules, they, they, they pay, you know. But, uh, my bill's over a lot for me. I got four, they don't even know where the road outside is, they take it back with them, you know, they just come up to it the weekend, uh, we, we don't, we don't, let it permit, we can improve it. We just be aware of it, the hunting camps don't always generate that much trouble none, but anyway.
Anybody else, else have anything? If not, then I've got one thing, um, did, did all of y'all get your invitation from , uh, Taylor Brown to attend the city meeting Thursday night at five thirty?
Yes.
Um, I think, uh, I'm gonna be there, and if there's going to be other commissioners there, then I think we're gonna have to make a comment, but, you know, I think it was a good, I'm, I'm really, um, pleased that he invited us, and, you know, several years ago, we, we talked about, for lack of a better word, being more friendly with the city and working together, and, uh, I, I think that, that the two governments in town, we should work together. Uh, so, does anybody else?
I live there.
Thursday night at five thirty?
Okay, I'll be in, uh, Twitter, Kuchin, Swan River, four o'clock, Thursday night.
I think I'm available, and I'd like to go, so, you say.
Better, I'm, I'm gonna go. Okay, well, thank you everybody for coming.